All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Called a meeting to order. And any items from the public before we get started? All right. If not, need a motion to approve the agenda?
President, I move we approve the agenda. If there's any modifications or changes for February?
Okay, have a motion on board. Do we have a second? Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Hess, how you doing today? We'll open this back up for Board of Review and Equalization Session Four.
Yeah, good afternoon. Um, we don't have any changes to make today. And are we scheduled? I thought Buzz was supposed to be here 2:30.
Yeah, we'll put him right at 2:30.
You can wait till 2:30?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have anything else right now.
Okay. Yep, yep. All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Zaya, you're in the next agenda. I am Community Correction Director, request for therapist. Is that for us?
Probably for him. You need one?
Yeah.
I can, I can help you out. We've had our partnership with Mountain Air Behavioral Health since, since we started the Day Report Center, August of 2016. That's been a beautiful partnership. I gave Dr. Harton's notice last June of our, of our intent to pursue licensure as a behavioral health center. And our plan up until recently had been for, for him to continue providing services until licensure is in place and we're ready to begin that process on our own. I intended on coming before you as part of my budget request for 2223 to request.
Larry Buzz, if y'all want to talk, you're gonna have to leave the room. We can't hear. Thank you. All right.
Part of my intent for my budget request for 2223 was going to be to request for new therapists to fill the roles of the therapist that, that he has hired and have been providing services at Day Report Center. We received grant funding to hire one of those therapists. So my plan was now to request three. I'll be coming before you on Thursday with my budget request. However, he's in the process of, he's about to open his women's center and he needs to staff it. So he is concerned that if these therapists stay in place that he's hired now through June 30th, that he's going to be in a position where he now doesn't have work for them. So he, he saw fit to give us a notice of termination of our MOU effective February 28th. That puts me into a bit of a position because we've got, we've got a, a gap to, to, to fill. I have a plan in place.
A gap from February 28th to July 1st?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a plan in place to cover the majority of the need, but I can't cover it all. So I'm here today to ask for, to be able to hire another therapist now. If we were to hire another therapist now, I'll be able to, to fill in the gap until hopefully July 1st when I can hire the addition of therapists and then we'll be in a position at that point to provide all the treatment services ourselves.
So what's happening to his therapist?
He's moving them over to women's.
Okay, all right.
If, if, if everything falls into place in the next month, Tim should know whether he has the credentialing that he needs so that with these therapists in place, we can bill Medicaid.
Right, because this was, this is something we talked about six months ago.
Something that's been in the work for more than a year, actually.
So we don't have the credentials yet to be able to bill?
Just waiting for.
Waiting for the final notice.
Waiting for the final notice.
We may even receive that this week, next week, probably later.
If I remember correctly, that once we're able to bill for, it's, it's, it's not going to be something that's going to be in the red, it's going to be in the white.
Well, no, it, you know, we'll have four therapists and a Medicaid billing specialist and which will, which will more than pay for themselves.
And, and I think that you, was there, would it offer you maybe hopefully more consistency to?
Yes. It'll allow us to have direct oversight over the, the treatment provided.
You have, you already have three treatment groups now.
Intensive outpatient, four intensive outpatient programs. In light of this change, we're gonna, we're gonna combine two of them, go to three. We have one therapist that can handle one of them. Current DRC staff are gonna kind of combine to, to, to cover another one, which, which isn't ideal, but we can make it work for a short period of time. And then if, if you allow for me to hire a third therapist, I can bridge that gap until we can do it properly.
But in the absence of this therapist, you're going to have to reduce.
There'll be a number of people.
Services that were currently.
Yes, there'll be a number of people that we'll have to, we'll have to drop and kind of spread out amongst some other outpatient groups. There would be a pretty significant reduction in the treatment that they currently receive. Roughly 36 people.
So if that happens, what's the chance of failure for those folks?
It increases.
Significantly?
Uh, I mean, it's hard to project that. I, I mean, when, when we're talking people that are in early recovery, so an intensive outpatient program is, is three days a week, three hours of group therapy by a master's level physician, and at least one hour a week, sometimes two hours a week of individual therapy, plus a couple of other outpatient groups that are appropriate for their needs, life skills and things like that. So we'd be talking about, about 36 people just removing that level of treatment from them and having them come in a couple of times a week for recovery groups because that's, that's the only thing we'd be able to fit them into.
Three, you said three, uh, three days, three hours. Is that three days, three hours each day or three?
Nine hours, nine hours of group therapy a week and one or two hours of individual therapy.
Well, that's a significant difference.
Oh, yeah.
And before we agreed that Tim should come in and talk to the council about this, we did look at other options. There are other providers out there that other than Mountain Air Behavioral Health. Unfortunately, they're in the same quagmire that everyone else is. You can't, you can't get therapists. And the, the demand for their services exceed the staff that they have and currently have in place, so they can't, they can't help us.
So is this a position we're gonna have to advertise for or do you have somebody that you can pull from?
We actually just did a 30-day recruitment for therapists.
Right.
And I have someone ready.
That fits the timeline. And I guess my question would be too, I mean, it sounds like it's a very competitive occupation. Competitive wages and, is that right?
Just like nurses.
Right. Are we going to be competitive?
We are competitive, actually. The problem is there are just not that many people that work in this field and have the, the right education. There's not that many.
Which drives up, drives up, it drives up the wage then?
It does, actually.
And that's what I'm saying. I mean, in order for us to gain this business or this treatment, I should say, you have to make sure that we're competitive in wages.
We just started hiring therapists just this current fiscal year. We've never had a classification like that before. So we have a therapist one, a therapist two, and a therapist three. We did do a market survey to see what, what the market will, you know, what the market wage is, and that's where we've set our wages currently. It's not to say that, you know, a year from now, it's not going to change.
Right, right. So I guess my question to both of you would be, and I think the county council as a body is, is picking up on things too, because you have such a good program going, we don't want to go backwards at any time. If, if he was able to get the credentials and it's gonna be something that's gonna put us in the black instead of the red, then why wait till July to add if he comes back and says, hey, I got my paperwork in line?
If we could do that now, that'd be better for me.
No, I'm just asking. I mean, just, you know.
Well, we advertised with, like Tim said, we just, we just closed a 30-day ad. We only got two therapists, right?
On staff now?
No, two therapists is part of the recruitment. Two, two that were qualified.
Yes, oddly enough, I've had, I've had one more person after that was closed actually apply. So I have two on the back burner that are interested right now. Two more in addition to the one that we just hired. So that'll give you three. That would give me four. If we hire two more now?
Yeah.
Hold, hold on. Okay. I'm asking for, for three. Right now, I'm asking for one, but I need three. All right, okay.
And Aaron Mills, who has been with us for some time, as, as this program evolves and you'll see it in Thursday's budget presentation, and I actually had Tim, because there's a lot of moving parts, actually asked him to do an org chart just for the DRC so you can visualize how all the pieces fit together. Aaron would become the, almost like the clinical supervisor. She would, she would oversee all the therapists.
I, I kind of agree with you, Doug. If he's got, if you've got, if you've got that big of an issue right now, why, and you have two, as hard as it is to find people, why not go ahead and pull the trigger on both of them and, and move forward with both of them?
Yes.
And then I would get in touch with the one that's on the back burner. So that'll give you the three that you would need?
No, I'd, I'd still have one more.
Still have one more. Oh, so you need total four.
I have two on the back burner right now, but I have three positions ultimately that I'd like to be able to fill. I didn't, I thought maybe he was asking too much to ask for.
Well, no, the only, the piece that we're forgetting about is the billing.
The billing.
I mean, that, that's very important. That has to, that, that person has to go forward.
What we would do as soon as he gets the final approval, we would come to the, to the council and say, you know, you can brief them more on Thursday because Tim is scheduled to come before the council. We, we would begin to approve it immediately for Medicaid billing specialist. Because it's, that's kind of a specialized.
Yeah, it's kind of like the ambulance.
Yeah. And we already have the job descriptions and classifications, everything for every role. Because that'll have to be spent as part of the application.
So could we not, the motion not say something about moving forward with one? And then as soon as he has the credentials in hand, he, he can go ahead and start the second one?
That's fine with me.
Because really all it is is bridge money, right? We gotta give him the money to pay him until we get reimbursed.
Yeah, next year at this time.
Should be standalone.
Should already have generated enough to, to repay the bridge money that we advance out of this current discipline.
All right, entertain a motion so we move on.
So moved.
So a motion is okay to go ahead and hire one?
And then as soon as you receive the paperwork.
As soon as you get your credentials, you can go ahead and hire the second one?
Two more. The second one.
Yeah. Well, two more then.
Be a total of three.
Let's, let's redo the motion then.
Okay. Move to go proceed with the hiring of one and then once the credentials are met.
Once we have the credentials.
Once we have the credentials to.
In place.
In place, to go ahead and, and.
Hire the other two.
Hire the other two.
Total of three.
Total of three. Save, save your breath on those.
Are we gonna, are you gonna need to have the approval to go ahead and hire the billing specialist as well, right?
Well, we can give direction to, to advertise for the position. Let's give the direction to advertise the position.
Give direction to advertise for the position of the.
That particular position would be one that I'll put in my budget request because I wouldn't actually need that person to go fly first.
Seriously?
So I, yeah, the billing specialist, yes.
So what happens, what happens if you hire the therapist?
What's that?
You hire the therapist and and you won't bill for four months?
The 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 clinical supervisor will have her license on July first. At that point, we have to, we can't begin the credentialing process with the MCOs until she has her license in hand. So we don't have a need for billing specialist until July first. So we can, we can hold off on that position.
Well, we'll still go ahead and give you the right to advertise for it, okay?
That's awesome.
That way you don't have to come back to do that.
The right to advertise for that position for the billing specialist, is that the right terminology?
Medicaid.
Medicaid Medicaid billing specialist.
All right.
You got that, Penny?
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second now? Second, Eddie, second, uh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you all very much, so it's okay to make an hiring recommendation for one now.
Yeah.
All right, thank you all.
And let let Mr. Davis know as soon as you get the credentials in place and.
Good work.
I guess we need, Buzz, we'll get ready. Let Larry do it, come on over. All right, heck, he should be here by now.
Okay, hurry, you need to get something else.
Well. Probably be about fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, what's the length, okay, all right. Next on our agenda is Elaine Mauk County Clerk, uh, budget, uh, presentation for twenty twenty-two and twenty-three.
In your spreadsheet, just a reminder, because this is an internal budget, um, presentation, your spreadsheet reflects that it's different than the budget submission that that the internal department heads and elects made. It has been adjusted to reflect current actual positions and wages.
Right, and Ms. Mauk, I may ask you to give us a couple minutes when Larry brings his people back in.
No problem.
Instead of holding them up, I.
No problem.
That's okay. All right, so we're gonna start up a four oh two, Ms. Mauk.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for for listening to the presentation, because most of the things have are kind of static, but we've had a couple of things. Uh, item three forty-one, we had twenty-two thousand that's been in the budget for years and years and years under, uh, the four oh two budget. Well, the last year of twenty-one, we had six months over a million dollars of transfer fees, which means we've had all kinds of people that want plaques and everything, and the cost of ink has gone skyrocketing. So right, the previous money was twenty-two thousand, currently we have three thousand four hundred in it, and our next order of ink will be probably about three thousand dollars. So we're really, it's like they're down there drinking it, uh, that that big plaid machine. So I've asked for an extra ten thousand there on on three forty-one.
Let's back up to, let's back up to.
Excuse me.
Contractor Services, Q thirty, it was fifteen.
I had some, uh, books and stuff, I'm still waiting for Casto Harris to get delivered. They were supposed to be contracted to be put together, and I haven't gotten them yet. And that'll be about ten, that'll be about that amount of money, and then I asked for some extra, because I wanted to go. The minute books that we have from eighteen eighty-one are just laying down there in pieces, and I wanted to put them in the next year's budget to get them done, and it's gonna cost probably that extra money to get that done, because there's there's about fifteen of them, huh?
Some, I seen some of them books pretty bad.
Yes, sir, and and as I said, when you go to pick them up and they fall apart in your hands, it's and the papers themselves are fragile, so you can't save the inside when the outside is just disintegrating.
All right, I can go back to you. Anybody have any questions on two thirty, nine ninety, two thirty? Everything else from there up is the same. Um, and then I guess on the departmental supplies and materials, we just getting into the after fifteen thousand dollar increase.
Yes, sir.
On three forty-one.
Yes, sir. And that's as far, that was the only changes I had in in that particular budget.
Right, and your record books, another two hundred fifty dollars for those.
It had to do with a couple of books coming in there needing to be redone.
So your personnel is pretty stable.
I haven't hired any additional people, in fact, I've got an open position right now that I had hired somebody, and they they found a job at the prosecuting attorney's office, I'm in the process, I'm gonna be putting somebody uh, to work. I had contacted Gary Wine. The library has a microfilm machine that can transfer from microfilm to digital, and so we're looking to take it, that particular thing, and have someone work part-time over there to be working with that. And on that note, uh, for those who don't know, the Mormon church very conscientiously last two weeks ago sent us a thumb drive with the first hundred of our deed books digitized at no cost. And I'll be, I will be looking to get a a letter from the thanks from the county.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Uh, to do that. But I've worked the the last couple of days trying to make sure we get it indexed up and everything else. Then I'll be working with Gary to see how we can put it into the the works over at the courthouse. But it's it's really close, and I'm really excited about that. So the more we can get digitized, because more microfilm that we have or can find, it to go from microfilm to digitalization is so much easier than trying, because I don't want to take the books out of the building. I don't want anybody taking the books. Or the machine itself is between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars to get one of those machines that can do that. And I'm trying to narrow it down to see what is the least number of books that we need to do that with, and how I can find the most microfilm, because I've been on the hunt for that stuff. And I have located some, it's just a matter of getting my hands on it.
All right, anybody have any questions for Ms. Mauk? It looks like a total increase in operating with thirteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah, it would be very minimal.
Yeah.
I do want to point out that through the with the cooperation of the clerk and the cooperation between the clerk and the council, we've been able to make some some internal changes in the finance department.
Good.
Um, and I think it works very, very, very well. Um, one of the things, as Elaine and I have met within the past month, we talked about it, um, as we get deeper into the budget, for example, most of the professional services that are in four oh two are for outside accounting services. What we would like to do, um, as before the fiscal, the new fiscal year starts, is actually set up finances, its own call center. We've got the, um, out of the charter of accounts, we have a department number for finance. It will not be an increase in expenses at all, but it would be actually taking the positions that, um, are in four oh two, that technically are in finance and moving them into our call center, so that, um, next year, her budget, the clerk's budget will be more reflective of what the clerk's office is actually doing.
Right, and actually will decrease in.
Correct.
Some of that money.
Yep.
So you're saying more than likely on line item two twenty-three, professional services, that should go down?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Mauk on, uh, count number four oh two? All right, Ms. Mauk, I'm gonna ask you to let us do Buzz.
No problem, sir.
The assessor, if you don't mind, please. All right, Larry, you wanna start us out? We have a board of review and equalization applicant, um, Mr. Buzz Poland here. And so give us a rundown, and do you have any paperwork for us?
No, but I can get you some.
Where do you go, what are you talking about?
Okay.
It's in the read ahead? Okay.
The only thing I got was what Penny sent me.
Give us a second.
Yeah, keep that on your iPad for two thirty. It's on the, it's on the iPad.
But I can recap it for you.
Yeah, go ahead, we got it here.
Uh, Mr. Poland owns, you know, where the commons is, across the street from the commons, the Wise's, you know, store and all that. Well, Mr. Paul has owned land behind there, he owns all that land also, and he sold those pieces off. Okay? He still owns a parcel to the left as you come in in the main road. And he owns a parcel in the back with some farm, and he gets farm values on those. The question he had was, uh, he made an application for this on that this year. And we approved it, but we didn't approve, in other words, the right of way where you go in to go to Wise's, that road, he actually owns that. He still owns, I mean, it's part of his parcel. He didn't parcel it out. And but he gave the right of way away to Wise's and everybody else to use that. So we did a split on it, in other words, we did split a ticket. We'd have to assess him for that road, because it's not being farmed, and he gave the right of way away, he can use as right of way. And he's questioning the fact whether he should get farm values on the road itself. And so that's why he's here. Now, you know, there is a question whether if you are denied your farm application, within thirty days, you're supposed to appeal to the state tax department. And I'm not sure the jurisdiction you guys have on that here. But the fact that we split it out, it changed the tax class. But you don't have any right to hear tax class appeals either. So at any rate, that's the gist of it, uh, but Buzz is here. If you you want him to, uh, just go ahead and give him, give you guys his side of it.
Yeah.
When you say, when you're saying the road, are you talking, I mean, there's two roads going back in there, right?
The one furthest to the west?
There's there's two roads going back in there right now. And if you go in the main entrance, which I believe the main entrance to be the one with the stoplight, if you pull in the main entrance, there's there's parcels of ground on the left-hand side, and then to the left of those parcels of ground, there's another road that goes back in there. So what road are you talking about, and what other parcels are you talking about that he owns? Are you talking about?
Let me let Buzz explain that to you, because I'm not sure, I don't have a copy of the plaque. But the main.
I don't need.
Right away, you know, I can get one, but Buzz can explain that to you.
Yeah, Wees, Wees Avenue, it looks like it belongs to Wees Markets.
Right.
It's the Marketplace Boulevard Market is what Mr. Poland still owns.
The one to the left?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then he said he owns property to the left of that?
Yeah, there's a parcel there that he's got parceled out.
That's back, it takes it to the back side.
Back in the back.
The two parcels in the front, he doesn't own, it doesn't appear, but the parcel in the back to the left and to the north he owns.
Okay, so that's all.
Which is sixty-one point two nine acres.
Yeah. So that's just a road going back in the undeveloped property.
And actually, it doesn't serve anything other than the than that piece of property right now.
His property.
Other than a than an outsell lot, probably, yeah.
Okay, well, let's.
So I guess the question, I guess the question would be to you, Larry, real quick. The out portion, the out partial, and maybe you need to look at this, your map here.
Yeah.
As soon as I get the thing though. Has the op, has the right to to enter in from Wees Avenue, Mr. Poland, and Marketplace Boulevard? I guess, I guess the thing that you'd have to be worried about is if that partial, out partial would sell, I'm not so sure if that wouldn't put you in a pickle if that road is in farm, tax to farm. You wanna look at it, Larry?
You gotta pick, yeah, let me see that.
So this is under construction, but this is Wees, and Wees owns that road. All right.
Okay. Where is the forty-five at, down here?
Yeah, right here.
All right, so that's the road coming in there.
This is the place, this is the road, I guess you're talking about, because it's still under.
Oh, okay, so.
The main road, the with stoplights, not the one we're talking about, we're talking about the other road.
Right, this is the stoplight.
Woodland.
Yeah, that's the road we're talking about going it, because Buzz owns this piece here.
He owns that, he owns this.
Yeah.
But I think Market Marketplace Boulevard is the one you're talking about.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Buzz, come on up to the.
Yeah, he might be able to explain it better than I can.
Just state your name for the rack and buzz, please. Let's hear from Mr. Poland.
Bon Poland. Call me, call me whatever you want.
I was gonna say, I'm used to calling you Buzz.
I know.
I hope that's okay.
Uh, representing the Poland Family Limited Partnership. All that Marketplace Boulevard thing is still on Poland Family Limited Partnership parcel. The only reason it's there was because for good future planning. It's not needed now, it could be barricaded and blocked off. But for good future planning, the state required that that road be built there where there would be another left-hand turn and more room to stack traffic on Apple Harvest.
Right.
In the future, as more square footage is ever developed there.
Get it further away from the intersection.
Right. I didn't, or the partnership didn't build anything. We just, in a development agreement with Wise, worked out where they would build all the infrastructure that the state was insisting on going forward. So again, that Marketplace Boulevard, for the time being, could could be blocked off. We just, I mean, driving around, there's lots of farms with paved lanes and roads into them and dusk to dawn lights and this and that. I was just showing John, I've got pictures from a couple of weeks ago. Wise doesn't plow or salt or anything, that road is not being named aim, because it's needed. Um, they plow the main road that comes straight through the traffic light there. That really, right now, the state's fine with left-hand turns being made out of that. In the future, the state's plan is that no left-hand turn will be allowed.
Who owns the, who owns the road on Wees Avenue and on Enterprise Circle?
Um, Wise.
Okay, because.
That's part of, that's part of twenty, roughly twenty acres that they purchased in twenty fourteen.
Yeah, that does, it looks like the.
But we had to give up additional land for stormwater management and and the road to comply with the future needs that the state insisted on. So
So.
We didn't, again, we didn't build anything, Wise did, to comply with good planning for the future.
It's part of the deal.
It's part of the development, yeah.
So I haven't, I haven't seen claims. Don't, don't you have that piece of property that's down in the front under contract still?
There's a part, a small part of that front parcel that's still currently being farmed, that's under contract.
Is that, um, are they using that road as, uh, as their plan? Are they gonna use that road as their entrance?
In the plan that they propose, they will have access to to both both roads.
Right.
And that's what I was talking about earlier. So you're talking about the parcels between Wees Avenue and Marketplace Boulevard? That parcel's the one that you have under?
Well, Marketplace Boulevard from Apple Harvest, all the way back to where it dead ends right now.
Okay.
And again, this, it's future planning, but before I ever sold anything to Wise, two years before that, I entered into an easement agreement with a neighboring property owner and recorded the easement in the courthouse in, like, twenty twelve, probably twenty eleven, twenty twelve, to, um, create a through road to Delmar Orchard. I'm staying as as neutral and clear out of the whole thing as I can, but there's arisen, gee, it was six years ago, a, uh, disagreement between Wise and the neighboring property owner. And they've been involved in some legal negotiations and so forth, it's drug on for at least six years. If you'd asked me ten years ago, I thought the through road would have been built and connected and a whole lot of things that have been different, but is what it is. But is what it is.
I think one of the things you're gonna have to watch, Mr. Poland, I'll say it that way, um, is like Dan's just mentioned, the piece of property that you have on the market and have a, a contract, I think you said, has the right to come in from Marketplace Boulevard in Wees's Avenue, which makes that commercial. And if it, if I'm looking at this right, the Enterprise Circle on the north end comes back out on Marketplace Boulevard on both ends.
It connects to there on Wise's.
It's already paved and everything, right?
It's paved, but as I was showing John, it doesn't get plowed or maintained. They don't have, uh, even power going to, uh, streetlights get put in, but they don't light them up. Um, that, that's on part of the Wise development, that Enterprise Circle.
Right, right, yeah.
And, and the out parcels to the west of Enterprise Circle, there's, uh, I mean, what, and ultimately, somebody that leases their buys from them will ever decide, um-
Was the thought process originally to turn that, have that road turned over to the city at some point?
Uh huh, yep.
Why wouldn't the city take it over now?
Well, I have that question before Ms. Petrusi. Now, there really hasn't been any, we just kinda wait until more things happen and, and, uh-
That connector going all the way from-
Connector got done and all that, doing it all at one time. But, uh, because of now stormwater management fees that I'm getting from the city and this issue, um, I have requested that they take a look at going ahead and accepting a gift of that road.
That makes sense.
It was all built to effect so that that would be the case someday. And I thought that day would have been years ago, but-
All right, well, I mean, we're, according to the possibility of the code that Mr. Hess said, we may not even be able to rule on this, but we have heard your concerns. And I think Dan's got a, I mean, it seems like to me it would make absolute sense for the city to take it over. I mean, they're, they're receiving the, the sales tax on Wees's, I'm sure. Right? Um, so, all right.
It'd be the logical solution.
Yeah, because I, I think I could see where Mr. Hess's office could have a problem with it being farmed because I guarantee it's got a commercial entrance permit from the state of West Virginia to- On Marketplace Boulevard.
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, I guarantee it does.
Um, we've just, it, it's been there for several years now, and we always file our farm thing. It did get divided into separate parcels.
And I would, I would be, we'd have to talk to the state road to say, do you have the right to barricade Enterprise Circle off? And stop that traffic from going out on Marketplace Boulevard? So-
I'd be happy, I mean, too, all I get is people dumping, occasionally dumping stuff back there and so forth.
Right.
It's easy to get to, yet out of sight over the hill there.
All right. Let's dig into it. All right?
Appreciate it, thank you, John.
Anybody from the assessor's office have anything to add?
Anthony, I did have, when we got, um, Mr. Poland's request, I did have Anthony look at this. He, he wanted to know if I'm just giving from a legal, legal perspective about what the council may and may or may not be able to do.
So for the board of equalization and review, all you, the taxpayer can test before this body is the actual value, not the, how it's classified or the taxability. So on the tax ticket, I believe that there's some portion there that's, uh, commercial and there's some improvements to the land, the roads, they, I don't know, the light, or whatever's on there. A taxpayer to contest that has to first complain to the assessor and then appeal to-
They go, they can protest the value on that?
Yeah, they can protest the value here, uh, but if the, the actual-
But not the classification.
Classification, you go to the state tax department.
Okay.
So if, uh, Mr. Poland was saying that the road is not worth what the assessor says it's worth, that's something that this body could act on. Or if the current assessment of whatever it is, hundred and twenty's, whatever, whatever it is, if he was complaining about the actual value-
Hundred and twenty thousand.
-and that's evidence of, of that, that's where this body could come in and correct.
Well, that's what I understand he was doing. I understood he was complaining that the value was that of a farm access, not a commercial access.
Well, I don't, I don't, you'd have to ask the assessor's office on how they value, um, things. I think it's the cost to build, I think it was the cost of building regardless of-
Didn't cost me anything.
Yeah. Correct, I understand. You have it. But I think Mr. Street might have something to do with it on how he had for it.
My question to the body is, do you want me to put a presentation up or do you just wanna ask me questions about it? Because I do have something ready, but I did not know how to proceed because of the very thing that you guys were talking about. It's not really presented to us as a value issue. It's presented to us as-
Come on up to the podium, John, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, it's been presented to us as a, uh, issue of classification. In other words, the farm values on parcel, it's zero, six, twenty, ten. This is about a sixty-one point four-nine acre piece of ground that does have a dogleg that comes straight out to Apple Harvest Drive. Now, that piece of ground, which is three point five eight acres, just in our estimation, you can't farm that. It is a roadway. Now, if you can't farm it, so we put a tax classification on it, class split is what we call it. That three point five eight acres went into class four. And the rest of the farm, which is getting farm, agricultural market value on, is still in this class two in farm, but just that three point five eight acres. Plus, there is a value to the lights that are around because they're there. I, I, I don't know how else to explain it. They are there, so that value is added to the parcel. And that's how we do everybody else's.
No, I, I am saying exactly what you're saying, but every farm has a lot of roads on it and a lot of access. And, and you can't farm those roads.
But it would, the only thing I could say is in our estimation, that piece going from Apple Harvest back up to the end of that road, you're not gonna farm it. I'm, everybody has to have access, uh, but you're not gonna farm that place. If it had been just a lane going in, that's one thing, but you're not farming that. And so with the entity and how it is laid out, because it does connect, I mean, yes, it does provide that, but it connects right to the other two entrances going into the shop set. So it obviously has more of a purpose than just being able to travel across it to get to, uh, a back piece of land. And that was just our estimation. You can't farm that gra, uh, ground only because it's, it's paved, you're not gonna farm that. So that came out and was put into higher tax class and the rest of it is still at farm value.
All right, I, 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 just, John, whenever you get time, just give me a, a copy of the class or the, the ticket or whatever.
I could, would, would you like this?
Buzz, it's finished.
Yeah.
It's got pictures on it.
Come on back up, Mr. Poland.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just in, in light of, of comments and so forth about it, that entire, whatever it is, four acres, six acres, whatever, thing that, um, involved where, where the road is, uh, have always been a part of the farm back to when Merle Spickler was assessor. And, um, yet it was steep, it was just basically waste woodland. It, it never had any crops growing on that part of it before anyway. Uh, the cut in there was made and, and there wasn't any lost farm production in the, in the loss of that six acres of it, uh, what produces crops.
So seeing, seeing those, this is pretty relevant. Are you, are you opposing the value that's on this or are you opposing the classification?
Yeah, well, it was, I, the, the terminology and so forth is all totally new and foreign to me. I'm not well versed in this. It was just when I got the notice and contacted John back in December. And my understanding, it was just, well, because of the road and the lights, we've upped the, the value and it's gonna be more. And, and, and then got into this whole thing with it being split, which I'd never heard of before. I never experienced a situation where a piece of property got split and so forth. I guess that's where it came to this, um, what do you call it? Classification stuff, but I, it, it's, we wouldn't be talking about the classification if it wasn't for the value of the, the value that's being put on the road and the lights.
So, so your, your complaint is the value of, that you're having to pay in the increased value of the property?
It sounds like that, uh, in my mind, that's where it all started. Now, the legality, the, of, of stuff that Delgotti said, I, I don't, that's unknown to me, I'm afraid. The, um, it's a learning experience.
I got you.
I think it's, either which way you look at it, it's not, it, it's gonna basically come down to the whole. I mean, still not, but if you, if you're, if you're saying that you want it to be farm and you wanna protest the farm exemption on that road, uh, you can't do it here. But if you're gonna say, okay, I, I agree that it's gonna be class four instead of, instead of farm, now you're gonna protest the, the value of it. You can't, you won't be able to say, well, it should be farm. I mean, the value of that road's gonna be pretty clear.
My point would be it's still a pit, it's just that there's, there's a lot of farms with, and orchards and whatnot with paved roads going into them.
All right. I'd still, I, I still like to, to see, I don't think I have it here, is actually the, the ticket itself and what the taxes are on that road. I do not have that, I- If you go to the tax department, get me a copy of it or something. Well, I've been for the upcoming bill. Hasn't been printed yet, yeah. I can get you, I mean, I can get you a value. Yeah. That I can get you. All right. All right, give me that. Not now, not now. I think we've heard everything we need to hear for today. Is everybody agreeing with that? I can't, well, I don't know how, but I can't tell you, um, that three point five eight acres that's listed is undeveloped. I mean, if you, if you took the praise value, if the praise value is right on Mr. Poland's paperwork, I'm thinking the value, the praise value is about two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. Two-fifty-four-two is the total. Right. For that three acres of undeveloped. Right. It comes out to one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-three-hundred-sixty of praise value. That's what your praise value comes out to, you know, three acres, three and a half acres of undeveloped land. Undeveloped. Undeveloped, yeah. That's how we count the road, whether it's in undeveloped. But then you have all the road improvements too. Well, the, uh, pole lights are counted. Now, as far as the paving there, I didn't count that. I had classes before with the state of West Virginia that told me that if it's a roadway, we don't count them, it's just a parking area. And, and there's been differing discussions on how to count them. Without a parking area, I just thought, it's a roadway, I'm gonna leave the paving be, but I will have to pick up the lights because I know the place I pick up the lights. So basically, your, most of your ticket is based on a commercial property, no improvement? Actually, for that area, that's still that residential area, uh, for his particular parcel there because of the farm. So the split, only because I was there and I had knowledge of what was going on, I was the one who said, we didn't put split on here. So I got voted the one to come over here and argue this, but it's actually a residential piece. So those three and a half acres picked up the residential values that they were given. Which could have easily picked up commercial value. All right, thanks. Anybody else have any questions for, for the assessor's office?
I just, I see, you know, not only the roadway, but there's a boulevard that's, that's constructed there. That's, that's what that is, the boulevard. I see curb and gutter.
Yeah.
I see, uh, pole lights. Has any, was any of that road factored into, uh, stormwater management, uh, calculations?
It would have had to be.
Oh, the whole thing would have been calculated into it, or they would have made a building.
So what I'm saying is there's value on those things, is what, is what I'm saying.
I don't know what you're getting at. All right.
It's a very nice road going to your farm, for sure.
Easy, nice tractor, right?
Yes, sir.
But I saw them farming out to another entity.
Okay. I got it wrong.
Come up to the podium, Anthony, please.
Does, uh, does Wise, the grocery store or anybody there have any right or agreement to use that road at all? Or I, in an emergency or if it's for, for me?
I, I actually don't know. The, the agreement was that they build the road. I, I think if, if it's required that, I, I think we can get the road barricaded off. I mean, people just, some, very few people use it, but some people leave there and go drive down through there, especially if they're throwing trash out.
I, I go through there, it's easier to take a light than anything else. I've not thrown any trash out there.
(laughing). All right.
Glad you cleared that up.
All right, all right, thank you all. Thanks, Mr. Poland. Thank you. Assessor's office, um, all right, Ms. Mock, please. All right, so now-
We're on four thirteen.
Four thirteen, the voter's, uh-
Yes.
Registration office.
Let me talk about voter's registration. Uh, a lot of the issues that we have with incoming numbers is the fact that we've gone from sixty-six to eighty precincts. And the numbers that had been there in the past, that's seventy-seven thousand, et cetera, and some of these numbers were old and they were not updated. So I'm doing the best I can to get it updated, uh, into the twenty-first century. Coming down to two sixteen, it's got M and R equipment. I've got twenty thousand on there, I've dropped it down five because that was for repairs of the old electionist stuff. But we're gonna have trucks and things moving equipment around, so I don't know what kinda cost I have, and I'm estimating the twenty thousand would cover that.
And if you'll remember the cost of the voting machine included that in the IT budget Gary made this present.
Right.
So, so if that's the, so maintenance and repairs of equipment, um, what other equipment do you have?
Well, as I said, I didn't even think about it, moving it down to autos and trucks because, but we would have to have the, that's where I was thinking the money would come from. I don't have it for repairs of equipment at this moment.
For, for the one, well, you're really losing me now.
We have to move the voting machines to the eighty precincts. And IT is gonna be in charge and they're gonna be renting trucks.
Okay.
And I've gotta have money to get us out to the eighty, the eighty precincts and get it back.
Yeah, trucks and trailers, right? So-
So maybe the twenty thousand should be in autos and trucks instead of under equipment, I apologize.
And as, as you know, when you give her the lump sum, she can move this. And this is-
Right.
We, we made a pretty substantial state budget revision, um, last week and put some additional monies in the purse budget, um, because postcards are gonna have to be sent out to everyone notifying them of our new precincts. And because of the increases in precincts and the number of poll workers that are gonna be needed in the addition of the two early voting locations in North and South County, um, we don't pay poll workers as part-time employees and under-the-contractual employees. And that's everything that's impacted so far.
All right, so the postage, is that something, since it was, we had to redistrict, is that something we get reimbursed for or not?
No.
Well, in the past, we have some, uh, but it's really up to the secretary of state's office. For example, um, with some- For example, um, with some of the redistricting, they did, they just kind of sent every county a $5,000 check recently and said, here, this is for your, this is for your trouble. So it's kind of hit you, yes.
And the reason 218 has been moved to 20,000, the city of Martinsburg is getting with us this summer to work with their precincts and those things. So there's going to be a number of changes there. So that's why I left that number rather high. It, it won't be probably that high in, in another year or so after we get settled into our precincts and our, our districts. But trying to get everybody.
It'll go back down next year for the next nine years?
Yes. But right now, this year and the next year was the two years that we've got the, some changes with the redistricting.
Okay.
Then, uh, going on down, uh, the next change was contracted services from 77.5 to 180,000. There's $200 a day. You have, um, 80 precincts times five times 200. And then you've got, uh, 30 days of early voting, uh, with five times the 200. So it gets to be a, a quite a large number. And then we have the stuff envelopes. Everybody gets an envelope with a voter's registration in it and all kinds of things that is under that contracted services that'll be in the process in the next, uh, two or three, uh, months that we're getting ready for the primary. And then, of course, there's absentee voting, things that have to go out.
Oh, let's see.
The last change I have is 341 on department supplies and materials. That's going up because of absentee voting and all those types of things and documents and items that we do need for the election. Uh, we, uh, all these envelopes and things that we're working on is, is just, uh, envelopes, when you wouldn't believe, they're hard to come by right now for some reason. And they've got, the price has gone up considerably on things. So unfortunately, it's just like the, the ink and the printers. It's, it's crazy. I don't know why, but things have just gone up.
So, yeah, I think you answered the question. I just want to make certain. So going from 66 machines to 80 machines, that's a 17.5% increase. But our contracted services, we're looking to go up 67%.
Well, sir, I went back and the budget of 77,000 had been back for like four or five years. Nobody had ever gone up. And it was 180,000 or somewhere, over 150,000, I believe, 150,000 that Darryl Show actually had in the final numbers that I finally pulled, finally found them on contracted services. So we added the extra precinct.
Then we have to.
Darryl had come in and asked for an infusion.
Okay.
On which the council approved as far as state budget revision. So this is pretty accurate.
Yeah.
But as I said, it just, it, we just hadn't kept up with our numbers all along and.
And we'll have a better idea this in May because last week, we put, she, Mrs. Mauk had the 77.5, um, budget of the current fiscal year. We did put another $100,000 in there last week, um, in anticipation of the, of the increased cost. We'll have a pretty good idea whether that's right or not. When we sit down, we're going to create calculations, the runners, uh, there's runners the day of the, uh, that's all included.
You just, you just answered something. Well, a lot of this expense come in for this year that we're in, not next year?
Well, this, this is for the general.
This is for the general?
I know, but all the, I understand that, but, but all the magisterial district notifications and stuff will come out before the primary?
Correct. And that's why we increased the printing in the current fiscal year. But the number of precincts for the general and the primary will be the same.
Oh, for contracted services, yeah?
Right.
Okay.
Plus the two different, two additional, uh, north and south.
Right.
Early voting.
Yeah.
Is there a, do you have an actual cost on that?
Well, ballpark, you know, as I said, there's a minimum of five people per, per day. And you've got 30 days and then you multiply it times 200. That's just a, an upfront number.
I mean, just adding those two additional, the north and south.
$30,000 a per, a piece for the personnel.
Right. It gets.
So 60, $60,000 without any additional thing from anywhere else. That's just, that's just the contracted services.
Right. Right.
That's $200 a day.
$200 a day, yes.
Per person.
Per person.
150 times two.
Right.
Once we have a system in place with the old voting machines as far as moving them, we will have that same system in place. Um, we will need IT employees and voters' employees available, um, as well as facilities workers to help with moving machines and things like that.
Logistics.
Uh, this, this primary, the fact that it's not a presidential election.
It's a good thing.
Will be a good thing for, for us because we'll be able to work out a lot of the problems.
We had a real tough time trying to figure what our numbers were going to be with cost because we had the old numbers we were dealing with. And, uh, Sherry was able to pull up an, an old set of numbers of things that had been infused into the, the budget. So it gave us more of a ballpark of what we needed and, uh.
And I guess the department, uh, department rental supplies and materials is 20, uh, $15,000 more because of the envelopes and all that stuff?
Envelopes. And then, of course, you have packages that go to each precinct. There's a box that comes in that goes to each precinct. So there's another, instead of 66, we now have 80. This is of all the stuff, the supplies that are required by the state. And as, as I said, after we get past this primary, I'll be able to nail it down very, very diligently. But at the moment, I'm, I'm guesped at straws because I don't have actual numbers. I'm just trying to work with what I have.
All right. So Mr. Davis, would it be fair to say that the, the approved budget for 7121 was 587,912? But we infused about 100 grand?
Actually, we put 145,000 in it last week.
Last week?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. 45,000 for postage.
Right.
And 100,000 for contracted services. Because we looked at, um, the cost of mailing, um, postcards versus, you know, other forms of notification, um, and, and postcards is basically most economical. So, uh, we put 145,000 dollars, uh, into operating expenses last Thursday.
So you're saying this current year that we're in is now 732,912 versus next year's request of 718,912?
Right, sir. Yes, sir.
But I just want to remind everyone that it sounds like a lot of the stuff that's, that's in 2022, 23 budget is going to be expended in this current budget.
We get 718, I thought it was 725,455.
Last page.
It's 732 as opposed to the new request of 718.
Eight, 718,912.
Well, the seven.
Go to the breakdown.
Mr. Delia, the 725,455 reflects the salary increases too.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm on the breakdown sheet.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all. I think, I think a lot of this mailing and a lot of this supplies and stuff like this is going to go out this year.
Right, yes, sir.
Want to also point out, you'll look, when you look at salaries, although the council provided a 10% salary increase to all the employees, you'll see when you look at, at Department, um, 413's compensation and benefits, it barely went up to 3%. And that's, again, due to some restructuring that Mrs. Mauk has, has done. Some of the part-time employees that she had that she didn't need has not been replaced. And, um, she has made a very, very conscious effort, she and Nathan, to kind of restructure that job. So instead of a 10% increase in wages, um, we'll see, for example, salaries just went up 2.32% next year. It just, again, commendable and then also.
Those are a couple of staff members that aren't there anymore.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for Ms. Mauk on 413?
And there are no changes in 421, which is civil service.
All right. So the county clerk's civil service, um, has basically been flatlined for the last, your requests are the same as the last three years.
Right. I'll be honest with you, uh, Mr. Harman, Sheriff Harmon is, uh, continually trying to retest and all this. So our number, a question on, on some of the prices for a number of testing items or some of the physicals and some of the things that we're doing. Uh, he, we've been keeping it under line, but I mean, he's, he's aggressively working with the board and Melissa to, to get the new staff members and we're, we're getting there.
Yeah. Because I, and, and I was going to torment him to say, don't build him up too much, he's in the room, but, um, but, uh, the one thing, and Sheriff, you'll, you'll appreciate this, one thing that, the reason why most of this money was in there was basically being sued.
Right.
Right? So we had, you know, had to, had to deal with that. Um, and now it seems like, Ms. Mauk, if I can say this correctly, now the money's being used for, how can we better?
Advertising and that kind of thing, yes, sir.
Getting, getting qualified people, um, um, and getting more people that's willing to work at the sheriff's department.
Well, we sent all 18 apps a day for new testing coming up, so.
Yeah, so, um, okay. Um, anybody else have any question for Ms. Mauk on the civil service, 421? Because I was going to say we need to cut it down to about five grand, but, but at the same time, I understand.
We better, you better make sure we have.
It diverted somewhere else.
Well, uh, when Mr. Harmon took over, there was a number of questions in the room as far as, uh, employees and things that were incorrect. And then we got a total of a new board and, uh, uh, things have gotten ironed out. And he's been very diligent with, with the regulations and employee hire. And it's, it's made a big difference because it's communication, getting back and forth with, with the people and how the, how the law works.
It seems like it's not a reactive, is that the right way?
It's proactive.
Proactive.
Proactive instead of reactive is what I'm trying to say. Yeah. All right. Anybody, how many problems with that? I mean, well, we, but any questions? Okay, Ms. Mauk.
Well, I have one comment. Uh, last week I told Mr. Kearns, I said, I found the petition where they, uh, contacted the county court, court asking for the county court to mandate vaccine, uh, of smallpox, mandatory for the county in 1913. Then I found another MOU that said that the court was working with businesses for them to have their employees get shots. Well, today I found the pest house. The pest house was where they sent the folks that were to be quarantined if they didn't have any place else to go. And this is the, the deeds where they sold the pest house in 1916 and 1917. So historically speaking, we're not that far from where we are now with the pandemic. So I just thought Jim would enjoy this. I know Bill did because he wants to get it on the website. We're going to get all this up there for us. Thank you.
Don't give Bill too much.
Well, the biggest issue, I, I empathize with him with, with nurses. I just look at the situation he has. It's, it's almost, uh, uh, insurmountable with, with the poor salaries that they're expected to pay with people with BSs degrees.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Mauk, for finding all that stuff. Every day you're finding some.
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, give me a second here.
It's the salaries.
John, are you, I see John and Mr. Poland and, and Anthony came back in the room. Is there a reason that y'all want to talk again?
No, they're, they're going to go back and certify a question to the state tax department on the classification. I was just explaining to them how to do that.
They're just here for the show. No, I'm here for my budget review.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know. Hey, I know. I just want to make sure. All right. Next on the agenda is, uh, Mr. Hess, the assessor, uh, for budget, uh, presentation 2223.
Although you don't approve as part of this process, uh, 407, the evaluation fund. I did ask Larry to provide that and it is a no factor.
All right.
So you can say, see that he did ask for the 2% allocation.
Give me a second, Larry. My paperwork's getting messed up. John gave me too much paperwork.
That darn John.
All right, so. Which one are you going first, Larry?
Well, uh, I don't need to do any of the 407. It's just that you all were given, uh, some of the PDC that it was approved. And you all didn't have any objection, I think, to, to anything. Because I got an email requesting from PDC saying it was, proving it was okay for the PDC.
Yeah, same here.
But that's, that's all I need to.
All right, so we're doing 406.
Yeah.
You said something about the budget presentation.
Yeah, he doesn't need to make 407, but.
I know that, but I thought you said he did.
And you know, sir, in years past, you have not gotten a copy. And I just want to make sure that you have, um, what, what has been.
Okay. All right. All right, so let's do 406, Larry.
Okay, well, um, what I did was, you know, we had, we went to, you know, 40 hours and, you know, and all that last year and the increase in salaries. So, um, so that changed the amount that, that was supposedly being infused into my 406 account. I don't know if that was put in there or not. It was put in there? Like, I didn't get anything showing that.
What was it? Well, that's because we, it hasn't been input by finance.
Okay.
What we typically do is because there are a lot of personnel changes, the council didn't approve the, the 10% of cost of board for most employees until the end of July. They didn't approve your changes until October.
Okay.
Um, they added, um, some additional firefighters, some additional deputies. Um, they did some things with, with some pre-certified deputies and things like that. Having said all that, rather than go back and make all the changes every month, we wait until the first six months of the year has, has gone by. Um, and then we just make all the changes. For example, if you looked at your control report for December, um, you would have seen that instead of using 50% of your wages, you probably were somewhere between 60 and 70% of wages. That's because that adjustment hasn't been made.
And then choose, yeah.
The total adjustment for next year, um, as it stands now, your salaries and affiliated benefits will increase 133,650 dollars. And that's based on your current staffing. And that does not include, um, the, the council had discussed a chief deputy assessor. Um, that is not, that is not included in, in any of the numbers, only because you moved that and put that money aside in contingency and that money is still there.
Correct.
Yeah, on, he would have to hire before that.
Right. All right. So I guess getting right down to the, to the stuff you're operating, it's the same as it was last year. And that's what we're here to do today.
Yeah, I didn't change anything as far as, other than salaries and that, mine item stuff for the, um, contractual services and all the others. It's 35,000 dollars. It's the same as it was last year.
Yep.
And what I usually do, since I have the evaluation fund that you guys allow me to have, um, I will put like for printing, you know, I got $4,000 down for printing. I spend $4,000 each year for printing, but I just make up the difference out of it. And so I don't change much on that from there down, that 35,000. I just, you know, whenever I run out and get down to the bottom of that, I'll just pick it up.
Take it out of 407?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, as far as the salaries then, is that going to change that? I mean, of course, what I have here that I submitted is not going to be correct now, but you.
It will all come July 1st.
It'll be all correct.
It'll be, it'll be great to the day.
They always touch. All right.
Okay, so let me ask, okay, so we moved three from 407 to 406. And I had, do I still, I still have three spots left?
Right. Actually, you have, as of right now, you have two vacancies.
Two vacancies?
Yep.
Okay. Now, is that built in that, what you infused in, that's part of that too? Okay. All right.
Actually, three, if you hire a chief.
That's in there too.
Well, that's not in there, but we have. The council put that in contingency. Until such time you decide that you're going to fill it and you need to come to the council and say, this is what I'm going to do and this is how much money I have.
All right.
But this, this reconciles with the agreement that you. But this, this reconciles with the agreement that you had. We do, um, Rodriguez, I forget the three that we did.
Yeah.
But yes, the three you're in here plus the migration to the forty hour work week.
Yeah.
Plus the ten percent.
Tiffany Sanders, Melissa Rodriguez, and Amber.
Yep.
And how's that working out? Are you, everybody staying busy?
Yeah, it's still pretty good. Everybody's working pretty good. I just had, you know, Bill retire my mapper and, uh, then Karen, you know, in those seven years, she's like, you're sure you're tired. I'm gonna have to replace them because we need, we need those positions still. But doing pretty good.
Now, they were both in four oh seven.
They're in four oh seven, yeah.
And, and, and just, four of seven, we don't make any adjustments to that from one year to the next, whatever he submits to the state and they approve, and then he gets two percent of the assessment.
Yeah, that's what you meant. You gave us all that stuff that we got by email. You gave a hard copy to us.
Yes, sir. But what we do for all the other departments, and I'll use the prosecuting attorney as an example, she doesn't have a lot of turnover. So if she loses an APA, that APA may be making a hundred thousand dollars at the time of this of her separation. She backfills that position at someone that maybe has, has lesser, um, experience at seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars. She doesn't get to keep that money. Every year, I go back, Penny and I spent one whole week, we reconciled all of that, and we adjust the salaries based on current staffing levels. It used to be that money just rolled over from one year to the next year to the next year, and that's why we ended up in a situation where we actually had to build in what I call a salary plus, because it was extra money that was left over that wasn't affiliated with any employee. Um, so we, we adjust that now. So this, come July first, you will have a actual true, um, salary based on who's in place, what they're being paid.
Plus the thirty-five for the other.
Yeah, that's all, that's all included.
That's, that's mine.
And that, and the, and the assessor has done a real good job of it, because I don't think, in fact, this is probably the first year that you have to cut a little bit. In years past, you might have shaved five hundred dollars or so off, but.
Well, I just did the difference in salaries.
He's done a really good job with his operating budget in four oh six.
Yeah.
I can't remember the last time it was increased.
Uh, it's been about the same for the last eight years.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, Larry.
All right, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
But he's able to pick up that increase in operating expenses.
On the civil service. Well, it grows, grows every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. And that helps me out. That's why we keep this one down to at its minimum and don't have to. Thank you very much.
Got a lot of text messages. Somebody sends me a picture through my window and blow that one my truck. Little dump truck I got sitting down on my property in the city, knock both sides out.
Always something. We got too much stuff, that's what the problem is.
All right. I'm gonna have a lot less here.
I was gonna say.
I'm gonna get them.
I don't know.
I'm gonna have a lot for sale.
It's, it's the best time in the world to sell out, and we're still holding on. All right, next on our agenda is Sheriff Nathan Harmon's budget presentation for twenty-two, twenty-three, sir. How you doing?
Because we don't have anything else.
Yeah, well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Hi, Sheriff.
Hey. I know it's been a rather long day for you all, and that's the reason why I put it on a PowerPoint, but, you know, Randy said it keeps me on point because I noticed I'm at the end of the day, I give him forty-five minutes first in the morning, and I'm giving him twenty, so I don't know how to take that. So I wanna, I wanna be as quick as possible.
Okay.
Uh, with my presentation. I will, do wanna pass out something for you all.
How many pages you got there?
I was just. Just something for you all to look at.
As, as we go through.
Looking sharpen business like today.
Thank you.
I clean up, my wife says I clean up everyone.
Thank you.
I give you two.
No?
And this should also be in your packet.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, one of the first things I wanted to. All right. Um, you'll, you'll see a lot of folks tallying that, you know, and you've heard me say it actually, the very first year I took office coming in, um, that one deputy per thousand. I've done additional research in it. Um, I wouldn't say it's a myth, as it is an embellishment in terms of a number when it pertains to counties. As I have read it, there is more substantiating evidence that pertains to municipalities more so than it does county or state entities. So I wanna try to get away from that one per thousand and explain it in a different way.
Yeah, because what, we would, we would keep hearing one per thousand, and we didn't, you know, if you do law enforcement in the county as a whole, we'd be right there. It's even probably excluding the city of, well, if you do one per, that's eighteen, they have, what, sixty, fifty-some?
Yes.
And so there's, it's like one for every three hundred people or something.
And that, and that's a lot more achievable from a municipality, especially a metropolitan area, when we talk about those areas, than it is from a county, especially a state. One of the sheets I handed you was something that came from the West Virginia Sheriff's Association in terms of what agency, county, what county sheriff's agencies have per their population. I wanted to run through this real quick. This is a snapshot. So as far as where, where we're at, we have sixty-six deputies for a hundred and twenty-three thousand forty-one population, and we're covering three hundred twenty-one point one-four square miles. You're looking at our average of zero point five-four, okay? If you consider the estimated growth for the next five years of being three thousand population each year for the next five years, or three point two percent, um, we're not gonna be able to maintain that same percentage, and you will see a decline in deputies per, in equivalence to our population, which is gonna hurt us, and I'll explain why here in a second. You got Harrison County with fifty-five deputies, almost twice as less population, but they have equal square, or a hundred more square miles, but it's a lot more rural, and they're up there at that point eight-three percentile when it comes to deputies per population. That honestly is the magic number for Berkeley County, and here's why. You don't, don't look at it as a body per one thousand, look at it in terms of services provided. You have things called like the Western Effect. Folks moving from Maryland or DC, moving westward to West Virginia, who have been provided metropolitan services, and they move here and they establish residency here, and their expectation's a lot higher. Calls increase, and as a growing county, while the rest of the state shrinks, um, we are finding ourselves in a unique situation where we can, because of our growth and our economical development, that we can provide certain services that are obviously sought by many counties, they just don't have the funds to do it. Along with those services that are provided, like participation with, um, the lead program and, uh, stuff that handle with care, the kids packs, um, the ACE team, the missions and stuff. When you start compiling those services that we provide, uh, well, I'll even mention mental hygiene hearings, uh, and mental hygiene alone in twenty-twenty-one was sixty-six. Out of that sixty-six, you've got nearly half of those that were, uh, twelve hours all the way up to thirty-six hours long, and then that takes two deputies, two sworn deputies to take care of that situation. So you've had literally one mental hygiene patient that'll pass through three shifts until some, some, something gets solidified where a bed's found, medical clearance happens, and they transport. So all these services that we're currently providing, we're working on contractual agreements with stakeholders in the county to come up with, uh, a, a means of transportation, so we're not taking sworn deputies off the road. But all these additional services that are being provided, if you look at that sheet that I gave you from the West Virginia Sheriff's Association, we do fall within the top thirteen. I have twelve up there, but I noticed one more on the list, but the top thirteen lowest percentile when it comes to deputies per population. We really do need to bring that up, just simply to keep up with the growth, because what is happening, this ripple effect is, and I've heard it on the radio, and you may have too, is deputies are having to stack calls by level of importance. And so, and that can be bad, depending on what the situation is. So moving forward, I told you I'd move quick through this. This is a snapshot of a couple examples of counties and their deputies that pertains to their population and the square miles that they cover. Here's a, an idea of where we wanna be. And you can see, I'll just start with the, you know, we've literally, and this is more of a compliment, for the relationship that we have built together and what we've done moving forward between the commission and sheriff's office and the civil service. Literally, we are full staff, short two cops grants positions. As far as the department's concerned, we're fully staffed, we've already filled two cops grants positions, we have two more to fill, and that's where we're at as a department. So we're literally at sixty-nine. Oh, yes, Thursday you'll approve or consider approving, um, former trooper snack. And you have.
That's included in your, that's included in your pay count of sixty-four filled positions. Yeah, I've gotta look down.
Okay.
So yes, and so she backfills one of the four cops position, that leaves you two cops vacant, six left, so you'll have, if the council approves it on Thursday, you'll have, you'll have two vacancies.
Yes. You've attracted a lot of attention. Unfortunately, we had to reschedule the civil service test that was supposed to have occurred on Saturday, is now occurring on the nineteenth of February. You've got Canow County deputies coming up here to take the test. We've attracted a detention in state police, Lawrenceburg City. They're coming over, and they like what they're seeing, they like how they're taken care of, and that is solely due to what we've been able to do. So I appreciate you guys doing that. This right here is just, gives you an idea of what, obviously, I'm not coming in here and asking for forty-five deputies, but I'm asking for the consideration to help me get to that point eight-three, point eight.
Well, right now, if you want to one per thousand people, do fifty-seven. I'm not playing on my phone, I'm up here going to math, just trying to stay ahead of you.
It would be, it would be. But I wanna be a lot more practical about it. We can stair step our way there. I understand that with the cops grant, because we were successful this past year, we used that as a litmus test, didn't wanna go too big, didn't wanna go too low, we were successful at getting it. My understanding is I could come back and I can ask for six cops grant positions the next time. And then all I'm asking is, as part of this budget, you give me three more on top of the four grant positions that you've given me already. That'll give me a total of seven positions that you have, that you would, well, four that you've already blessed off with cops grant, but three additional deputies, that'll give me seven, and it'll put us at point five-six with the increased three thousand population. And, and that's how I'd like to try to stair step it, to give you more of a, an idea moving forward of what I could potentially be doing and asking for the year to come.
I, I got a question for you. Don't most of the sheriff's departments in, in most of the counties have, matter of fact, doesn't Harrison have two sheriff's departments? Doesn't Harrison County have two sheriff's departments?
Not that I know of.
I thought they had two sheriff's.
Lawrenceburg and Harrison County, I think they're one of it.
Those two sheriff's departments in Harrison County. There, don't they include in their roster, um, court security and, and animal control and all that? I mean, they're sheriff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you have agencies that still have those responsibilities, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, it's, it's not really fair to compare somebody that's using those and not add the, and not add the animal control and, and the court security into your count of numbers that you're using here in Berkeley County.
Fair on, on.
Not to use it as a fair comparison. If you're comparing those, I mean, if you use their eighty point eight-three as their multiplier for, um, for deputies per thousand, and, and they're doing those responsibilities, then in reality, we should add the count of the, um, court security officers and the animal control officers into your sixty-six in order to get a realistic comparison to what Harrison County has.
I think they're all, they're included. All the sheriff's offices, to my knowledge, have included all their sworn deputies within these counts, regardless of what their responsibilities are. So these, these counts also include all.
But ours says, on the sheet says sixty-six at, at a point five-four, and how many court security officers do we have?
Four.
Well, there's four deputies that are assigned.
Right.
But that's not your, that's what you're talking about.
I'm talking about court security.
Yeah. I, I guess what we're trying to say is, your number of deputies is sixty-six uniformed deputies on the road.
This is sixty-six deputies.
Total.
Totally.
So four of them's in the courthouse.
That's correct.
So you got sixty-two on the road.
That's correct.
And then, and they, and your animal control people and throughout the whole state aren't considered deputies.
Correct.
So this would be a true number.
Yes. And then.
Except, except, except where some counties, the deputies would be doing a hundred percent of the court security. Right?
Yes.
Where you have one person in the courtroom, and Mike, how many people Mike have?
I'm wondering the number right now.
We're just, we're just trying to make sure we, we're not trying to give you a hard time.
No, I understand.
We're comparing apples to apples, right?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
And I, and I do want, like, I really wanna get away from this thousand population comparison in terms of, I would like to see the breakdown in services provided at the county, at the county level, what they're providing versus Berkeley County. That's what I wanna see, because that's truly what you gotta look at, because for the over thirty-six thousand calls that we've taken, well, that's calls, that's actual calls for service, that is not a number of deputies it took to take care of that call. When you're talking about a drug-related incident, or a domestic, or a shooting, or a bar fight, or anything like that, when you talk about that, and what we need to do to respond to that in an officer safety perspective, now you're talking upwards of sixty-four thousand. respond to that in an officer safety perspective, now you're talking upwards of 64,000. And I know my predecessor previously said some, somewhere around the number of 56,000 or shortly above that when talking about calls for service. And he wasn't off base. We're now at 60, and I'm, I'm getting ready to show that. And I want, I need to, I would like the commission to consider the services being provided in this county versus what's Harrison County being provided, what's, what's Mercer County providing.
Is that something the Sheriff's Association has done too?
They have them not broke that down, but I can guarantee you that we are well far ahead of most counties in terms of what services we provide.
Okay.
Not from a sheriff's entity, but from a, a participation with your drug recovery centers, your Martinsburg initiatives and stuff.
Right.
And what we're doing to be more transparent with the community of those and things that we're involved in.
28 full-time court marshals.
All right. So, so what, I think what Dan has thinking, and we all, all of us in the room think the same way, you got 28 court marshals, you have, you have four, so 28 added to the 66, and then you have, most, most sheriff's departments probably still doing home confinement, they may be still doing community service, they may still, you know. So those are, that's, we just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Sure.
And, and then I think where you're going with the, and nobody, I don't think, I mean, just simple 3,500 people a year for the past three years is nine more deputies. Right? So, you know, I don't, I definitely see where you're going. Right? You're just, so, and, and I understand you're not asking for 57 new deputies. So, and I want, you know, it's kind of like I told the governor, you know, you got a campfire going, throw a piece of wood on it, don't piss on it, you know?
But it, you know, and it does.
Like, like he said with Ben Miller.
I will say with the cops grant though, it's, you know, we are, we are staged to actually get approval for more deputies when we apply again, especially when those involved in the community-oriented police and programs see that there is an additional investment on the county end of it, that we're just not relying on cops grant funded deputies. We're actually still investing additional deputies to try to maintain efficiency. And when you look at this next slide, you're talking, like we talked about, we ended on a little earlier, 36,042 calls for service in 2021. And if you look at the shifts, when we break it down by shifts, you can very much see, it's not so much that I need them on midnight shift as much as I need them on day and afternoon. And then the transfer over between those shift changes where I need actually floaters so I don't have someone that's already worked with an hour shift responding to an officer safety call like at the messing, and they find themselves there for additional two hours overtime, trying to go into those numbers, overtime numbers. So really, the, the folks that we're getting now are not only high caliber qualified pre-certified officers, we're putting them on the road a lot quicker just because of what we've done together and approved that process. And we're, we're doing some pretty good things addressing what we're, what we have to address now, but there will be a point where you're going to see more stacking of calls by deputies because they just simply can't keep up. So out of that 36,000, you're, there's literally 68,000, over 68,000 in terms of response when it involves two or more officers to that specific call increases stress.
If they're on a call, sheriff, and their shift ends, they're not going to come off the call at all, right? They would definitely stay there, so.
They will see to it.
Right, right. Okay.
Plus, it doesn't help that the state police decides to curtail their hours.
Well, I, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, so the state police, as everybody's aware, have recently stopped taking calls from 04 in the morning to 0700 every day. I believe I've mentioned it to the council before, that this is not, shouldn't be too much of a surprise, because I've, I've said it once, I'll say it again, that here in the near future, probably sooner rather than later, you're going to see the state police getting dedicated highway only. They're simply not getting the numbers that they need to get to substantiate the workload that they have here now. You, you have, there's 16 road deputies. On the books, they have 22, but just like any organization, you have management, you have evidence, you have specialties like child abuse cases, investigators, things that take away from that 22 manpower. Well, whether Charleston's not getting it or not, they have 16 road deputies. When I was a trooper, we had 18. That was in 2006. It's getting worse. The, the, I can't speak to the situation that troopers are involved in in terms of the benefits that they receive and why they leave and do what they do. I'm proud to say that we've, we've gotten a few of them because of what we're doing with our department. And I've had Captain Burnett more than willing to come in and paint a nice picture for you in terms of his experiences and where he feels the state police is going. Offered that before, we talked about it again. There's even been talks, and it has been, burn up the chain, it's shot down, I don't think for a minute that it's not going to be asked for again, that the state police come off of all nine more of them. When that happens, well, you're looking at the agency's going to answer all of them.
And we talked to this, to the, our legislators and saying, hey, if you're going to not fill the positions that we need by population and devy them up, I think there's a bill right now about trying to do that, to at least give the sheriff, give us the money to do. Right?
But I know there's a few bills that they're asking, the cost of living allowance, they're asking for a pay increase, I believe, to 10,000 across the board. Whether they get that or not, I'm not sure. At least in my experience, when you talk legislatively, you're always competing with features. There, there's a lot of competition there and I just have never been able to make any sense of it, even after talking to the lieutenant colonel down there and their philosophy and what they want to do moving forward in terms of adding troopers to detachments. But it's not getting it, and it doesn't sound like it, the requests that are coming in. This is a 2016 calls for service map that you're looking at. Gary probably, if he had here, he'd pull it out. After all the times I've asked him to help me establish a calls for service mapping as it pertains to 2016 to what we're dealing with now. And you're looking at 2016. This is 2021, and if I flip back and forth, I tried very hard, and Gary tried to help me to try to make this a more transparent slide in terms of being able to show you growth. So I just simply did it the easiest way and gave you areas of growth and density in terms of, you look at 2016, and as I flip forward, the orange spots literally become bigger red spots or bigger orange spots. And, you know, there's a lot more density to these areas, especially when you start moving, you know, towards the mountain, Hedgesville. When you look at the 2021 versus 2016 mapping, in terms of the expansion, this is another overlay, I would call it, in terms of all those red areas is expanded areas. Now, it doesn't show what I showed you earlier in regards to more concentrated areas in regards to calls for service. This shows it's getting bigger.
You mean the orange or the red?
The red is what's new.
What do you mean by new?
Well, this is, we're, we're going this way from, parallel from 11 to 81, we, our calls for service are expanding. If you look at.
Oh, this is, well, this is drug trend and safety awareness. So you're saying the drugs are spreading out more? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm, I'm talking about safety awareness in terms of, when you talk about how many criminal, how much criminal activity drugs touch.
Okay.
And then safety awareness in terms of officer safety. Our calls for service are just getting bigger and bigger and they're, they're coming away from 81. You used to see a clear lineage with 81 and Route 11 and condensation of calls pertaining to that strip. Well, now they're coming outward and they're expanding bigger in terms of calls for service. There's a drug problem, obviously, so it, it takes us more towards the Hedgesville areas and Back Creek Valley areas and whatnot. So these places are getting bigger.
Which follow the high density population is what you're saying, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And I love where I live. I live off Buck Hill Road. It's kind of quiet, but I don't expect, have that expectation five years from now. There's going to be more developments and more growth and it's going to move outward and this is, this is the effect of. So all the red areas in terms of what you see beside the orange, now keep in mind the previous one, these are darker red spots that you see, and I put a transparent red overlay over the areas where there was significant growth. No, this doesn't show it. It shows you more growth instead of particular areas, but just the general parallel line with 81 and Route 11, how much wider we're getting. And we're not, we're not getting thinner, we're getting wider. And I, I just wanted to show that with this slide.
My wife just told me that last night.
Yeah.
Getting the hair to get today.
So, with the three additional deputies that I'm asking for, this gives you a quick idea of why. When you talk about, and this isn't all the calls for service, I took, I extracted ones out of there so I could fit it on the slide and show you the significant increase. When you talk about 2016, in terms of just domestics, verbal or physical, regardless, it generally takes two or more deputies that, well, you had 2, 2,800 in 2016, you have 5,100 now. All right? So that's literally a 2,300 increase in terms, in terms of calls for service. And I'll just stick with the bigger numbers here. You got suicide prevention, there's mental hygiene issues that we talked about. That's not going away, it's getting worse. Again, we're trying to deal with that. There's a legislative bill down south, 4377, that is, is kind of sniffing a better way to do with telemedicine, but literally, there's the time constraints in that that I don't agree with, because the time constraints that are in there now, statutorily, we can't buy them, or they're not being bought. When you start shrinking those time constraints, well, you know that's not really followed, so I don't even know if that, that's not even going to help. Telemedicine might, but there's more to be done on that aspect of it. You look at assaults, stabbing, shootings, that's definitely not one officer. That's probably three or more easily, especially when you talk about the nightclubs and stuff. That's up by 541. When you talk about intoxicated people, noise complaints, stuff like that, 450 in 2016 now to over 1,000. All right? So you have an over 630 calls for service increase on that. So literally, just out of, just grabbing those things, you're, you're looking at over 5,000 calls for service increase between 2016 and 2021. Again, can we keep up with the services and quality of services that were provided to the citizens in this county? We continue the growth and we stick at that 5.4, I don't think we can. We have to be ahead of that so we're not stacking calls. I hear about stacking calls now and I, I don't like it, but I know that they can't Aside from all that, you take in retirements, resignations or employment termination. We're literally averaging an annual attrition rate of five or more. And that's just general organizational loss. I've got three that's literally qualified to retire this year.
12.5%.
So aside from the deputies that I need, are we even keeping up with the deputy qualifiers or retirement? I, I try not to predict how many people want to terminate in that ambulance thing. It's not a number I want to see through, but it happens. But the retirements, that's, that's a pretty good number. Anywhere between two to three usually is what you're saying.
And the reason why this number is so important to you is that if you were to the point where it took a year and a half to get a deputy trained to be on the road, you still lose an experienced deputy that you've had and that's already doing his job from Which we've been told that for years, it's just, I think that this is a black and white farewell.
Are you saying it's just soaking in?
No, I'm just saying, we've never had so much information. This is kind of the business plan or the plan that we always ask for, right? Rather than just coming in and say, hey, I need this.
Well, it's definitely more than you need than just crime.
Well, I was going to say, it seems like the wrong people's moving into the county.
Yeah. Yeah.
Got monies to build walls? Just kidding.
When we go over to the, this slide in terms of overtime line item, again, the services that we provide, the reason why I'm asking for $396,000 is because since September 1st of 2021, you, we literally have 235 deployments with just 1411 alone. They're being used. Obviously, as much as I hate to say it, you know, there's a lot, been a lot of fatalities this year, one of which we experienced Sunday evening. Unfortunately, a teenage boy got hit by a vehicle. I am proud to say that we had deputies capable and being proactive enough to go seek for the next three hours the culpable people behind the hit and run and found them. Deputy Jenkins did a very phenomenal job in terms of running down the folks that decided to see what they did and then took off.
That happened right behind me, just on my way home.
Was that a Ford pickup truck or? I don't remember the vehicle. I think.
Something to paper about.
I met with the mother today. She was very distraught and she suffered a tremendous amount of loss in the past six months of her life. I won't get into that, but it's just a horrific situation. But having the ability to be able to even do that versus hurry up and having to run to the next call and not doing that, what we call criminal investigation follow-up that's needed, right there, the first 24 hours, the first 30 minutes is crucial in terms of hit and runs and those things. But back to overtime, you, and of course, the deputies involved with something like that, they want to see fruition, it's such a horrific thing. So you think, just like President Cooper said, that they're not going to hold, they're wanting to see, they're wanting to see fruition, especially if they get a really hot lead. The worst thing that can happen is, oh, time's up, I gotta run to the house, let my head down until the next day, because the lead will run dry, people move things around, hide things and stuff. But the accidents that have been worked, including fatalities, has been over 5,000 in 2021. And we've, we've discussed about I-81, that's an issue in and about itself. But SWAT team, they've had 27 deployments, and when you correlate that to what, what was going on in 2017, there's only four. Are SWAT teams being utilized significantly, even though the task force can grab them at different points and there's a reimbursement there on most occasions from Safe Streets or OCDA. Sometimes there's not, always. And, and, you know, who am I to say no to another agency that whenever I call them, they assist us, especially when an officer of safety is involved and they need the team.
So this is, this is multi-jurisdiction that you're heading in here. I mean, multi-county for our teams to go on.
We are cross-sworn in Morridan, Jefferson County. That's a good point. So if they call us, we do assist them. The dive team, they had 12 callouts in 2021. And like I said, mental hygiene trips totaled 66. And that's not an accurate number, but that's a safe number, because we just started tracking those better with our CAD system and Gary Lyons IT department's help because of the issues we're having with mental hygiene. So that was 66, and like I said, nearly half of them is 10 hours. So that was sixty-six and like I said, nearly half of them is, is ten hours or more with one, if not two, sworn officers taken off the road for that stuff.
Do you use any port security officers and deputy reserves when you come?
We try. We, we honestly try and there is a, we try to use deputy reserves, you can't use all of them. You gotta, you gotta find those that are capable. When it comes to Mike's guys, they've been a blessing in terms of being able to, to help us from time to time. But again, you're talking about someone that's worked a full time, a full day and you get ahold of them and I'm not saying we have a problem getting ahold of them, but there's just, it doesn't happen often, but it, it does happen. We're looking at contractual agreement and identifying entity that we can, as medical directors, I will present this in front of you when that time comes in terms of an entity that can do those transport supports. When I have that better put together, I've been having meetings with East Ridge and folks involved in the mental hygiene process to help solidify a better plan moving forward, especially on the transport side. We can, by statute, contract that out. The problem is, is that at the end of the day, the fingers won't be pointed at me in terms of the people that we're contracting it to, are they responsible enough, does the skill sets to do it and the training necessary to do it? I, I have some ideas, but again, I'll put that together, which will save a bundle on, on that alone because in one week, there was four mental hygiene transfers. So it fluctuates, it comes in, in surges, but sixty-six in two thousand twenty-one. This doesn't count also shifts being short with COVID and sickness and other family issues and stuff like that. So we're not even including that. But the average overtime usage per deputy is a hundred and sixteen point one eight. For travel line item, I'm asking for twenty thousand dollars. Things are opening back up if we're not wanting to do Zoom as, as much. We are, like I, I mentioned earlier, last year, I'm asking for an investment into your instructors for master instructor training where they can now come back and do things like train the trainer. We don't have to, I'll use Trampus Coles for example. He is a master taser instructor. We're getting Deputy Cronister to go with him to go do that training as well because you're not going to have Deputy Bull's around all the time. So the investment in being able to stay here in this county with your family and go through training, taser training, and be able to teach instructors to help facilitate that training as we go moving forward, especially with equipping reserves, tasers, you know, that, this is an investment all the way around. If I don't have to send them out to other states, I'll, I'll send a few, couple of states away to be the master diver instructor, the master taser instructor or the master firearms instructor. So we can reinvest it here, you know, that's the same thing. Specialty classes, we can't touch fentanyl or we advocate not touching fentanyl. There's classes, I'll use Morgantown for example here in, I believe in March twenty-third, I've dragged a group of folks going to Morgantown to learn specifically about fentanyl and the new innovative ways and how to deal with it and getting with David Port Center in terms of field test, fentanyl field test strips and stuff. So we're, we're looking at different ways to be able to, to keep up with the new trends that are going along with these drug deals and their engineering and at the same time keeping our officers safe. There is an investment in some travel costs. Of course, with inflation and the increase in manpower, it adds that additional cost too. So that's the reason why I'm asking for twenty thousand dollars in my travel costs. When you talk about the stuff that we've got, trailers, tow, tow trailer SWAT, dive trailer, our ATS machines, obviously the ATS machines are still under warranty. We don't have issues with that. However, our ATVs and generators and stuff that, you know, maybe the tires are going bad on them, that's not necessarily covered under the vehicle maintenance of the county per se, but we have to take care of those things. When you look at crime scene vehicles and boats and stuff, trailers that haul those things, you know, we're, we're asking for eight thousand dollars to maintain winches and tires and brakes and stuff like that for those items.
Sheriff, if I can interrupt, we have a full-time central garage that takes care of things like this. Why do you not, not use them?
Well, I mean, it, because we're concerned because that's not part of the county. I mean, the county hasn't assumed this under their vehicle mechanic budget. So are we paying them for this service or?
I think it was a question as to why I was never going to have a central garage, that's all. I just wasn't aware of it.
Generally what happens is.
Mr. Scales is still maintaining the vehicle.
Well, he, we'll, we'll have him, we'll have him inspect things like I, I put an example below, Mr. Scales just simply because of what he does there. Our Bearcat, we, we literally were within twenty-four hours of having to send that thing to America. And I'm pulling my hair out on transportation costs and getting it up there, the labor of finding out what was going on with the wiring of this stuff, wiring harness. When you get into that, that's time intensive. He, he spent a day looking over this Bearcat in the final hours of us making the decision and literally saved us thirty-five hundred dollars. And that's what he's really, really good at is, is being able to save our department money by replacing the wiper blade here and getting things done efficiently, quick. We have to have an ATV. He, I had two ATVs come to me from the reserves when we were doing some restructuring, neither one of which worked. And he got them working with Matt and said, do that. And this is the services he's, we look at the vehicles that are out there in the green lots now, those things take time. I know Matt's very busy, but we can shave a little bit of that off in lieu of, you know, waiting, you know, four or five days for it to be done. He can do it fairly quickly with inspection. That's why we use Jason and Matt and that's why I'm asking for that, like to maintain these, these items. So obviously because of all the good stuff that we're doing, there are advertising and publication line item, two twenty, I'm asking for fifteen thousand dollars. The reason why I'm asking for that is I wanted to have one radio ad, I wanted to have one to infomercials, brochures, recruitment shows, setting up the table, the way the table's supposed to be presented, our backdrop, going to the one sixty-seventh employment show. When we set up the table, I was slightly embarrassed of, because of the lack of resources that we had. So no one's individual fault. We just didn't even have so much as a professional working table coach. We didn't have brochure holders or anything like that. We didn't have professional backdrop. Coming from a training environment and going to gun shows and stuff like that and a corporation investing in those things, like some point training center, whenever I went to the gun show, they had huge backdrops, monitors showing video, action shot videos of what they did in terms of training. I'd like to do the same thing. I'd like to show a commercial video on what it is our department's all about, what it is our deputies do, a little piece about SWAT, a little piece about K nine, a little piece about dive teams and run that loop video at these recruitment shows to give them a true understanding of what we do. And you get that kind of eye candy at a recruitment show, you're going to get a lot of people paid because you're investing in that. And, and being able to have that kind of aggressive recruiting campaign, obviously there's, you know, there's going to be benefit. Like I said, what we've done already has already made it out the south and we're getting the attention. I'd like to continue that movement. We're looking at having a, a spring community event in Park Lot there in front of the sheriff's office, inviting all kinds of organizations and entities there. Hopefully that, you know, there's everything with COVID and everything dies down, but regardless, we're looking at a community event where we're actually going to offer to the citizens more inside look of what law enforcement does. I'd like to involve them in virtual, a, a virtual video to show them what law enforcement does. Which goes into training and education, mine two twenty-one, I'm asking for ninety-four thousand dollars. I've said it before and it remains the same for me today. What you're seeing across the nation is ripple effect of organizations shelving training all the way to either diversity training, leadership training, driver's training, use of force continuum training and just simple ergonomics of, I'm going to draw my taser and I intentionally draw in my taser versus my gun and not accidentally do the other. If I intentionally going for my taser, then I will go for my taser, but that takes repetition. If there's an incident that occurs across the nation, for example, the domestic that killed two New York NYPD officers where they got pretty much ambushed, I, I like using those situations and having short training evolution in fact Park Lot where they're using ammunition rounds and whatnot per shift and go through really quick introductions of, of this kind of training where at least we're not falling behind in terms of exposing our officers in a controlled training environment to stress induced situations to keep them at a level they need to be at, make responsible decisions in stressful situations. That's what that training school is. The firearms projection of forty-six thousand dollars, that includes quals, semi-quals, range fees, course fees, your instructors. We're getting more instructors, so that's not the requested amount from our firearms instructors. I reduced that because of the, the, what you all have given us in terms of ammunition and whatnot. We didn't need that entire amount. Plus we're certifying additional firearms instructors so our overtime a lot more goes down because we have to do the semi-quals and annual quals in low light situations as well. So with more instructors, I don't have to keep our only three instructors out there the whole time, all week and jumping around. I'd like to do them over time. You see drone operation training up there. I do want to invest more into a drone program. I've talked in detail with Gary Wine, the use of drones, licensing involved. Tom and I went to Camp Dawson, we've done a training assessment of special operations teams and how they deploy them. Fairfax couldn't be a more perfect example of why we need drones because of that incident and because that incident could have been quarmed about two hours earlier because we had to wait for three separate drones. One had seven percent battery power, one was too big, one was wrecked. So, and each time we had to wait thirty minutes for another one. When we could have our own drones for our SWAT team so they can actually utilize these things instead of physical body being in the house, we can actually fly a drone in it, just like the Fairfax incident without putting an officer at risk. We can actually deploy a drone for accident reconstruction or bird's eye view photography when it comes to fatalities and whatnot. So there's a lot of good things that can come out of the drone program. I know we're looking at Tracy and April to, in terms of grants that can provide some of those, but I, I would, I would very much like to invest more in a drone program than actually, we have the mobile capabilities of multiple drones from big to small that have charging banks in them that are in a mobile unit that we can actually deploy, especially to other counties if they need it as well. But we would love to have that capability and be self-benefit in it. And maintaining our, our officers' basic criminal investigation skills, crime scene processes. Oh, you saw up there, no pawn and retail theft task force. As soon as I saw the, what's that, retail partners, the, yeah. That Ulta situation, these, these organized groups traveled the entire East Coast to them what they were doing. When you, you may have heard something about that, that these ladies were going in there in groups working together and they would dump hundred dollar bottles of perfume in their bag and they would have hundreds of them. But they were working in concert with other folks and other Ultras across the East Coast. We would have never known that had we had that communication and, and followed up with our criminal investigation division and assisted other agencies with this same group. The people we have could very well be big players in Maryland and we get a better chance to identify them and possibly catch them and what Maryland has, we can exchange that information. Greg Alton, who's a former detective, great investigator, whom I work with, is very adamant about putting together a retail theft task force where you have this communication line. It's like Lowe's communicating to Martinburg in Maryland. If Lowe's has a big theft and it's the same people, they communicate this internally amongst that franchise and they do this through software that they have. This is something similar. No pawn, same thing. That's a fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollar investment to get involved with that software in terms of what's the, what the trends are in the pawn shops. Our dive team's being used quite a bit more. I'm asking for a ten, additional ten thousand dollar investment from that. As you see up there, instructor recertifications, obviously that takes time.
The, the, the percentage of the dive team has went up, which is considerable. They're searching for things, searching for bodies, they're searching for, for, you know, personal property, what?
Well, Frederick, Frederick County Sheriff's Office called us. They actually, there was at one point they needed us to look at a few different quarries for, to be exact, for a vehicle that was involved in a homicide that they were, they believed that had intel that there was a gun in the bug box. So they utilized our dive team and our search warrant ability to be able to secure that scene. Of course, they have their own dive team and they work in tandem with each other in operations like this, but sometimes one has the capability, the other doesn't. So they work together to be able to go out there and do that. So that was, that's one situation. I believe there was Jefferson County, Virginia, sometimes we're asked to go, to assist.
Jefferson, Maryland.
Jefferson, Maryland, I'm sorry. Sometimes we're asked to assist and provide guidance and others where those, the, those agencies don't have that. All right, sorry. Court costs, I had two cases previously, five thousand each. And, and at times I do get an overzealous deputy that can't get the bug box open, so they actually, it doesn't get necessarily returned back to the way it was. So, you know, you have those kind of things that fall into place. That's, that's why I'm asking for that. That's why you see that. Supplies and materials, again, this is for a drone program, a tactical operation drone program investment. Investigation kits with drug tests, upgraded drug test kits. As I said, Morgantown's offering a March twenty-third fentanyl class. Usually when we go to those things, we see the latest and greatest investment to our officer's safety in terms of being able to test these items without putting our hands in. I know Randy Lilly has a grant funded, that car, ninety-five thousand dollar machine over there that can go through translucent material and be able to shoot lighting systems to actually bring out what it's, what its contents is made from. It doesn't always work and it always depends on what kind of container it is. So great investment, great tool, but task force has it too and it's running in similar issues. So I want to see what's out there. Handheld recorders for our A team, night vision goggles. I'm only asking for two of those, but these are the kind of things that we're going to be investing in. More high-end can of cameras, the cameras that you already provided are great for the road deputies. We're looking for more of a, not so much a forensic quality camera, but something a lot better than what we have. Honor guard equipment, high gloss leather. I believe one of the last upgrades was in two thousand and two and before that was nineteen eighty-nine. We're looking at the honor guard. They do extremely professional job and they're very much appreciated by the community. I'm looking at a reinvestment into their blouses to get a more professional, upgraded look in terms of piped dress blouses. Kentucky State Police is a good example. Uh, Kentucky State Police is a good example, if you wanted to look at, at their uniform, uh, they have piped dress blouses, very, very sharp-looking, it'll be in the same color that we would get ours, and very closely resembles what we would be getting, but this is your Honor Guard, these are the folks that, God forbid, we do have a line of death, their line of duty death, that would be presenting the flag that would do the honors, uh, that have done previous honors for those that have served, uh, as a first responder, perhaps. They, they do a lot of things for our community. Um, okay, so one of the things that you see in there is an attachment that I gave you, it's an awning covering for the rear of the building, and I'm not asking, I'm asking for your consideration in this regard, and here's why. When you talk about the five ATV, when you talk about, um, the Bearcat, the crime scene vehicle, and stuff that we have in there now, we're growing it, so the only thing I'm asking is, is to invest or consider investing in overhead cover on the outside, which is, is, gives you an idea, the illustration I gave you, where we can keep these things at least out of the elements of being snowed on and rained on, and we can put these, like, ATVs on the cover. Uh, uh, so that's, I believe, slightly over eight thousand dollars, is one of the quotes we looked into getting, but all I'm asking is, like, an awning, a lean tube of sorts that can be put in that back area, so we can start putting things under it to better protect it, like the, the light generator, there's no reason that thing should.
Let me ask, let me ask you a simple, my easy fix on that and a better fix on that. Could you not utilize some of Seven Fifty Baltimore Street for that stuff, completely out of the weather?
Um, there's a, I think, we, I've, I've discussed this with, uh, other council persons, I think there's some construction needs to be had because of some issues there, that'll be done, I guess, I don't know when the, the roof will be put on and different things like that, but, um, we could.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I mean, the roof may leak in some places, but there's a lot of areas that are in real good shape, we're talking about putting the roof on it pretty soon.
And we have all the cruisers in there, we have all the, the tools, we have all that, we have boxes and boxes and boxes of, of valves, so if we have a leak or two, it's not, it's not massive, right?
Yeah, we could definitely do that.
Very sporadic, I mean, very small stuff. Um, to me, that's, that's, that's a mu, if, if it was my choice to have stuff outside undercover but not inside, I can assure you that Seven Fifty Baltimore Street would be a lot drier than a canopy, because you can't stop a rain from blowing.
Right.
But anyway, and that, and those things are something that you're gonna go get anyway, right? I mean, it's not like they have to be there ready to go out, because somebody's gonna go pick them up.
Correct.
Somebody needs ATV, they're gonna, you know.
I just added the upgrade for Honor Guard and their bandit, because it is actually part of the uniform, but aside from that, uh, Randy can tell you, our distributors have increased their cost by twenty percent. So with that increase, uh, obviously it's a reflection of the interest that I'm asking for, as well as, uh, outfitting the new deputies. We broke it down to their equipment and everything, you're looking at over eleven thousand dollars per casualty of new equipment. Um, and then, of course, when we're going to these training events, obviously, I don't want them looking all slopped up or anything like that, I wanna make sure they're professional. So we're investing in polos, um, and, uh, BDU pants with professional represent our agency, professional ones that are going through the initial training. But aside from that, what you saw with the change that we've done already in the uniforms, um, we've taken a lot of our forfeiture money and reinvested it into those uniforms that you see the deputies wearing now. So we are taking a lot of that, uh, especially on the heavy lifting on the front end of this uniform issue. Um, and again, okay, so now I move over here.
Excuse me, Sheriff, were you done with seven hundred?
I am, sir.
Just, just to point out a few things to the, as I've done with all of them, um, this council has been, and the sheriff's accountants have been very supportive of the sheriff's department the past year. Um, you've added additional slots for captain, lieutenant, and sergeant, not additional positions for additional slots. You've authorized bringing in certified law enforcement officers that are rated above entry level, which the sheriff has acknowledged. He did approve the ten percent pay increase for all from time employees and the four grant, um, funded cops positions. Um, as you can see from your spreadsheet, those changes in the money increased some recent benefits by seven hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred and three dollars, which is about eighteen percent.
Yeah, I've seen the percentage.
It's a big bump. Uh, in addition, outside of what was requested last year, you've completely funded, um, new wet suits for the divers, which we've paid out of contingency. Uh, you reimbursed the sheriff for one of the traffic control devices, which I think the sheriff has been very effective, and well over a hundred thousand dollars worth ammunition, um, and that's why you see the increase in supplies and materials. It started out, it was budgeted at, um, one fifty-seven, eight, and due to infusions, it, um, it's two eighty-one, four forty-one now, so, um, just so that you look at some of the requests. Thank you, Sheriff, I didn't mean to interrupt.
As you see me up here on my phone, again, I tell you that I could tell everybody else, it's not that I'm talking to my wife or anything like that, but I'm doing a grand total of all those things, I didn't see a total sheet up there, Sheriff, for the seven hundred. So, just so, if, and I'm thinking that I'm pretty close, if I kept up, overtime increase of a hundred seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, operating increase of three hundred fifty-one thousand, four ninety-two, three deputy requests of a hundred eighty-nine, seven, seven, seventy, forty-five, and I've based outfitting cars and new cars for three new deputies, about seventy grand, and I did, at seventy grand, I probably had your outfitting your deputies as well in there too. A grand total of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seven dollars, or seven, four hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents. Just, I'm doing my homework, and, and just to let you know, as we all, we always have this discussion, that's a big request.
I understand that.
Okay.
What was that last number?
In my head, I thought we were at a million, but.
Yeah.
What was that last number, seven hundred?
Huh?
What was the last number, seven hundred?
I'm thinking it was nine twenty-two, four, seven, forty-five. That's just a, the, the last number that I've used was seventy thousand dollars for the car, the outfitting the car, and, and, uh, probably based on the insurance that we pay, which is almost a thousand dollars apiece, um, stuff like that. And I'm not, I'm not complaining about the deputies, because we are growing at thirty-five hundred people per year, right? So the math works, that's black and white, right? I'm just, just probably gonna ask you to, you, kinda give you a, a fair warning that you might wanna prioritize some things.
From the fan. No, I get it, I understand, um, and I understand that there's some more things that you all look at that I might not, um, see, but that's, that's the good part of having a healthy conversation.
Well, we wanna, we wanna keep adding wood to the campfire.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and, and.
We just gotta be careful that we don't run out of wood.
And I will definitely spend what you give me.
Well, hopefully some grant.
Exactly, so, yeah, there is some give and take with that, and we're not gonna stop finding for grants where we can, and, you know, Tracy and April have significantly improved that effort, and I don't see that getting any smaller, I actually think that they'll, they'll be well over a million dollars, uh, as it, like I said, in the year of review, they've gotten us over seven hundred thousand dollars in grant funding, and, and, and next year, with the rate they're going and how well they're doing it, uh, you know, there, I could foresee that being a lot bigger, so we'll continue to, to seek that. Like I said, the, the grant, uh, for the cops grant, we're gonna continue doing that one.
Don't, don't take what I said as a negative comment, please.
I don't say.
Because you've, you've given, um, and I'm afraid to say it, your presentation for the seven hundred account is the, by far, the best presentation we've had in twelve years, right? Or eleven years, and it's, and it's, and we always ask, what's your plan? What's it gonna get us, get us, what is, you know, and, and we understand also that for a lot of years, you know, um, we had the, the judicial branch on, on board with trying to help out with the drug addiction, we, you know, if, if you do the crime, you gotta pay the time, not unless you, you know, you're being looked upon as, as, um, it may be help more than being further educated in, in the jail system. Um, we have the day report center and all the recovery services in place, and now we have the enforcement side, so, um.
Unfortunately, there in Lumber Yard, it all boils down to, you know, the prosecutor might wanna log drone on her fire too, so we can't give them all the share.
We could.
We, we, we see, we see the.
They get ten percent of our older seniors.
But on days like today, we all gotta stay warm.
Yeah, we, we see, you know, we see that, you know, not only your, your manpower and your budget being affected, as Dan said, the prosecutor and, and all the court cases and the number of cases going up, and, um, in, in reality, it, it's a good thing, you know, we, we've got, you know, great people in the, in, in the positions that we, we need. The count, when I say need, we, I'm talking about the taxpayers, you know, and the voters, they're the one that voted, voted, uh, I'll say you all in.
Well, I, I mean, that's, I feel that I'm obligated to, to present to you the information that I have and put it, um, and relay it the best I can, and ask for your consideration. There's no, I don't come here expecting, um, the world or everything that I ask for, I'm just asking for consideration, and, and if your consideration is, you know, we'll give you this, but half of that, none of this, that's fine, there's reasons why you made this decision, and I respect that, and this is, well, I'll respect my next request for the tax office. I know that this is, this probably is a, you know, uh.
My total's still, my, my calculator's still, still running, okay?
I think we're still under a million dollars with this request, so, um.
You know what I, you know what I'd like to see, and not that you haven't done a, a, a really good job of putting this all together, what I would like to see is this, this wish list that you've got, um, broken down into, um, reoccurring expenses and one-time expenses.
Yeah, the one-time expenses are, are a little easier to swallow.
Well, if, if you look at where you're at, you can look at that, and you, we don't have to be planning on adding to, you know, the burden years to come, if it's a one-time expense, we can look at it and see if we can find funding for, you know, for those, a lot easier, that's for sure.
But even, you gotta, there's even another category there too, because even the one-time expense thing, more than likely will have to be replaced in some type of cycle.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, uh, all traffic solution devices, as great as they've been, um, the warranty's gonna run out, um, stuff will need to be replaced. Um, they're awesome machines, the data that they give, but tell you unequivocally with confidence that Back Creek Valley, uh, generally runs in a thirty-five mile an hour zone, about sixty plus.
I read the post.
Okay, so, it's, it's, it's doing what it needs to do, it's warning the public that we're coming, and it is a game changer in terms of identifying problem.
It, it was about a sixty, forty split, the sixty were people who were saying.
Did you read it?
Yeah.
Did you see my post on it?
No, I, I got so darn tired of reading them, I mean, there's a bunch of them, and they were just saying, you know, thank you for bringing it out, this is gonna be, you know, I, I heard more thank yous than there were negativity towards it.
There was more, there was more people stating that, uh, traffic cameras are illegal than anything else.
Illegal, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that was probably two to one.
Yeah, oh, I did read your post on there about explaining why it was there and how.
And there's been a few, well, we, I mean, we've, so, I'm at ninety-six.
Yeah.
What are you doing going ninety-six and a thirty-five? It's just, that's, I can't even fathom that, even as a person that drives cars, trains driving, so I just can't even. All right, so the, the reason why I'm asking this, I'm a big advocate of performance-based increases, um, I know Mr. Davis is pulling his, well, he gets frustrated at me, I'm sure, because we talked about percentage increases, you guys just gave the ten percent, um, uh, increase, and, and here I am asking for an additional twenty-three thousand to four performance-based raises. Let me just, let me just put this out there in terms, regardless of what you give me, I'm just asking for consideration, so I could do just this, because you have a staff tax office that has literally collected, um, real land property, uh, state taxes in terms of their success of ninety-three to a hundred percent. The state, uh, uh, prerequisite is a five, they've always been above that, um, and, and they work efficiently. Their attrition in terms of their employment is probably one of the lowest I've ever experienced, because they've got a family relationship there. Every time I go there, they're having a internal function celebrating whatever it is, Valentine's Day, Halloween, Christmas, whatever, they're buying gifts for each other. There's the relationship that they have garners that commitment and service that they provide, and then, of course, during the busy times, they take the beating of those calling them and, and, yeah, having heated discussions over the phone, and they still present a professional service to the public. Uh, obviously, we're always looking to be more efficient, kiosk machines, different things to provide to the public, but I'm asking for your consideration to give me something that I can evaluate their employee evaluation sheets, and I'll be more than happy to provide those. In terms of those that go above and beyond, if you rate them a one in terms, in terms of poor service, you gotta articulate that, if you rate them a four in terms of exceeds expectations, you gotta make a note of that, and I'll be more than happy to provide you with that in terms of why I would give someone a thousand dollars increase in another person month. Um, I believe in, I believe in this because it incentivizes work product and, and commitment. So that's why I'm asking for four or four, uh, tax office, uh, increase for the twenty-three thousand. Their advertising and publication, um, in May, they have a personal and real property tax advertisement for seventy-five thousand dollars, that is a, uh, that's the heavier one. I know I've asked this last time, uh, but I broke it down a little bit more in October, uh, there are three consecutive advertisements that are run before the land sale at ten thousand dollars a piece, slightly over, and then December, the purchasers list that gets run for the land sales, which is generally the smallest one, but it, it gets very, very close to the hundred and forty-six thousand dollars I'm talking about publication. Now, I understand that, that the county from the publication fees on each of the tickets that are collected goes into the general county fund, and I'm, I'm in hopes that, that we can absorb that and, and, and do this, uh, so we're not always having to come in front of you and waste your time to ask for more, because I think last time I was given a little over seventy-five-ish, I was given enough to do the big publications and whatnot, so that's, that's why I'm asking for that, just to be a little more efficient.
On that end, I'll be even a lot less.
The software systems to extract data called conversion, the annual fees and the contractual services, generally about thirty-one thousand dollars, that's why I'm asking for that, for those annual fees for that. Their supplies and materials in terms of what they consume to do the available job, I am looking at moving the gun permit, uh, processing to the sheriff's office, and if you walk into the front lobby, you have two interview rooms, well, there is actually three, there's the two interview rooms, and then there's the one where we do kids' ID. I'd like to convert, uh, convert that to a dual-purpose room where we do kids' IDs and we do gun permits. There's certain things that have to happen with the gun permits, the tax office needs in terms of, uh, uh, how to document things that's under a software system that they have that has to communicate with the state that I don't think I can replicate at my office, that's simple foot traffic from one building to another in terms of taking that information over, but that is in plans, I've talked to Gary about that, completely doable.
Should be four-five thousand, four thousand thousand, this slide, I think, four-one, on submitting budgeting direction, put on this slide.
Okay. Okay. For supplies and materials?
Supplies and materials. They gave us 22,000. Last year, last year.
Uh, apologies, I guess that should be 45,000.
They have it on their spreadsheet.
Okay. Uh, supplies and materials for the reserves. Um, the reserves have been a challenge and, and through the challenges and growth and restructuring and organization and making sure that everything is more streamlined, where I don't have individuals out there purchasing their own items, make it more uniform, we have, we have utilized what you've given us last year, um, and, and have and will be by, uh, June 30th for sure. Captain Heckman is in charge of overseeing the reserves and I can tell you, um, that has been a new appointment, uh, as recent as a month ago, and he has done a phenomenal job in terms of streamlining the reserves, so they're not, they're, we don't have, uh, folks out there wearing different things, purchasing their own stuff, and we just didn't like that and that's something we identified, uh, fairly early in the program, so there's, we're definitely using the money, I guess, as a short explanation.
Are, are you still recruiting people?
Yes, sir. Um, I'd have to get back to doing the executive level, have to help, but, uh, I believe David Jones is the most recent graduate from, we'll say in November, Jefferson County Reserve Prep. It's not a mandatory cabinet, but, you know, you definitely get over 170 some hours of your entire week, it's a pretty big segment. 17. We're in the process of purchasing high visibility vests. They do a lot of traffic out there, so think about the vests we're wearing now, just, uh, that have a lot of fluorescent green on them, like a traffic road vest, but it's also a protective vest for them. Uh, we identified that they're actually out there purchasing their own stuff. Some people are purchasing different flavors to mark, you know, reserve, definitely sheriff's reserve, just no continuity with that. So the money you invested in within the last year is getting invested in, uh, and you'll see that soon enough, um, but it's used and, and we would like to continue the same requested amount. Um, I understand that this is probably going to be, uh, a heavy lift. Captain Gardner and myself and Kevin Jones have been through quite a bit of, uh, revamping some things there at animal control. Since Kevin Jones went out for medical leave, uh, animal control officer Terry Murphy stepped up to the plate and ran the office as best as you can from, uh, if you will, an assistant chief position. However, there was no structure for that. Um, we're creating a structure for that, but at the same time, we're also touting a pay scale that would attract those folks that, you know, we've gotten new folks, um, that come and stay for a, a month or two, uh, going through training and then leave. We've had, uh, you know, ACO Burdette who left because of financial burdens that was placed, you know, what's called inflation, I just don't wanna get personal, but he had to do, through the financial issues and now he's not. Uh, and I, I, I made one promise to them, I promised them that I would put this before you to not only better structure the animal control, but also attract better quality folks. These folks are investing in defined training to help with, you know, horses and, you know, cattle and different things that we're experiencing out there, they're being given additional duties, uh, their, uh, policies are changing that have, that they're having to adhere to, uh, there, we've already improved their work environment in terms of providing them with better, more conditioned workspace, workspace that's more practical, not where they work, but I would like to see, uh, a structural change, uh, when it comes to, um, chief animal control officer, assistant chief, and then animal control officer, or those full-time, um, positions, if you would consider that. I've given you the attachment that, that mentions that change and the increase that is requested and, you know, I know it's a heavy lift, but I'm asking you to consider it.
All right.
Yes, sir.
No, so-
All right, so that's, that's it, and I wasn't nowhere nearly as short as I thought I'd be, but, um, apologize for being long on that, but like, like you mentioned before, it's, public safety isn't cheap and I know it's a big investment for you all, so I'd be remiss if I didn't put on at least a couple early decent presentations to help better understand it and I agree with you, I think recurring costs is important to put in there and reflect in the next, moving forward wherever I can.
This is, this again is another prime example of what a one cent sales tax in the county overall would do for us, flat out.
Well, and your preliminary revenue projections are not gonna be as strong as they were last year.
Not moves my mind, not from your part.
Not, I mean, revenue, not about uncomfortable matters.
No, no, I'm talking about revenue, yeah, I'm talking about our taxes, our, you know, in the, in the past, inflation nationwide has been up over 50% in the last three years.
Well, unfortunately, I think we're gonna hit the fullback issue.
Well, we're fully staffed at the animal control office and they dealt with over 5,000 calls last year. We're growing, not getting as small, um, you know, and they're, they're getting, they're getting just as much calls on top of calls as we are, and there's six. Counting.
Chief Jones.
Okay.
All right, Anthony's gotta get ready to fix dinner for Katie and them, so we gotta give him the-
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Appreciate all the hard work, that's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up-
Well, the other part is probably true.
Yeah, next on our agenda is Katie Delegata, prosecuting attorney, uh, budget presentation for '22, '23.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I had, um, known that I was going after the sheriff in a presentation like that, I would have brought a PowerPoint and asked for more people.
And brought us cheesecake.
Cheesecake, oh my goodness.
It's late, he's getting hungry.
Well, I will do my best to keep it short. I actually just came back this morning, I went to the Association of Counties meeting in Charleston and went to the legislature yesterday, it's been a bit of a whirlwind. Um, so, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present my, my budget, it is fairly straightforward. I, again, um, have not asked for any sort of increase in my, um, non-personnel related budget, um, we're, we're doing, um, pretty well cutting costs actually in my, in a, in a small way when it comes to things like supplies and materials. What I do need is more people and I included a, a request for an additional prosecutor and, and additional legal assistant and also provided some numbers that show the increase in filings, I think that's attributable to a number of things, um, increased growth in the, the county as well as frankly, the increased activity of the sheriff's department, which I have to absolutely commend Sheriff Harmon for, um, you know, his deputies are doing an amazing job and I, I have a, a great deal of confidence in the department and the response to calls that we're getting. Um, so I, I think that the increase in criminal cases is, um, fairly, it's somewhat to be expected, just like I said, with growth in population, growth in enforcement. What really alarms me, um, is the growth in abuse and neglect cases. If you look at that, um, we had in 2019, those are what's referred to as A and N cases, we had 158 filed in, uh, 2019, 222 filed in 2020, 289 filed last year. So each case, um, it's not like you get a, a case from a family with the numbers, each case represents a child, um, so that's, you know, 289 cases, each of which deals with a child who's been abused or neglected, um, filed just in the last year. That's, I have two prosecutors handling those cases and frankly, they are overwhelmed. Um, it's really, it's become, that job is, is always a burden in that it's so difficult to do, but the, the workload has become pretty intensive for them.
You say you need more people and I'm nowhere near screening that, what about space?
So, I had, I think it's, it's been a bit now that I had a, a conversation with President Koppamaper about this, I would absolutely invite you all to, um, come down and, and check out our offices. We have filled, um, you know, they, they like to say they keep us in the dungeon, um, in the basement, we've filled all of the exterior offices. Um, I did have Gary and, um, Jack Lang come down recently looking at, um, taking out a wall that would let us set up some more cubicles in the center of the office. Um, we'll, we'll grow out of the office eventually, but for right now, the, um, the bigger concern is just getting the people to handle these cases.
I'm sure you have a place to put them.
Sure.
And the files and, you know, whatever, hey.
Yeah, and, and I, I do appreciate that, um, you know, we, we do, it's the very center of the very bottom of the building, but we, we do have a place to, to put them if we get them. So, um, yeah, it's actually after I submitted this request, um, one of my prosecutors who handled the juvenile docket came to me and said, you know, I'm just completely overwhelmed, I, I don't know what to do, so we're all kinda trying to pitch in and, and help with that, um, but that, that's our biggest need by far, is just that, that docket's become overwhelming in addition to the continued increase in, um, other criminal cases that we're dealing with, so, you know, I, I try to only ask you for things when I absolutely need them and, and this is when I absolutely need more people.
If you look at the spreadsheet, and I wanna commend, of, of all the electives that I deal with, um, she is by far the most cooperative and the one that communicates the best, I mean, she, she keeps us in it. But if you see the spreadsheet that I've given you with salaries, council gave a 10% across this board increase, I've used the example where a department prosecuting attorney loses senior members at the office and it kind of restructures based on, um, fact-filling those vacant seats with, with a lower paid position. You gave a 10% increase effective July 1st, um, with some of the restructuring she does, if you don't do anything else with salaries, um, her salary's only increased by 8.2% next year with their, with some of the restructuring that she's done. Um, so there's an example of someone that, you know, yeah, I got this extra money, I'm not necessarily going to give this to my employees, you know, and she, she has realigned, as you know, some duties and things like that, but still coming in under the 10%.
Look, just, I mean, Katie, ever, ever since you got here, you've reorganized the office, you've, um, I could go on and on, I'm trying to be nice, um, uh, to others, um, but, um, yeah, I mean, you've, you've done a wonderful job from day one, you really have, and, uh, I, I think that, you know, I, I think your request for the extra staff is, is, in my opinion, is not out of the question. Um, the, um, the one thing you, you are bringing to my attention a little bit though is to, you know, there, there's talk and there's drawing starting to be done for the Crawford Building. Maybe we, before we get too involved, I mean, we just have the conceptual drawings of the, of that very early on, we haven't touched it for a while, uh, of the, um, of the judicial building itself, you know, because we wanna make sure down the road that, you know, we're growing, we're growing by cases, we're growing by population, we're growing and, and all that stuff, and I, I think I was told by you and Gary both, um, back five or six years ago, there is no more space in the judicial setting. Um, it's, it's a huge building and you would have to think that there would be, um, so we need to start thinking about that because as you, we all know, the planning for that stuff is years, well, the planning is a couple of years and then the construction is another two years.
Well, unfortunately, everything changes over and over.
Right, uh, and, and, you know, so, not so sure we don't have to start looking at, you know, is it, is that building 100% used to its capacity? Could have been redesigned a little bit here and there to get more space, is there any dead space, which we've been told there's not, but, um, you know, might have to do analysis on that building.
I think what we should do is walk it, I think we should walk every floor and look at everything and just get a real good feel for the whole thing because, um, I'm, I'm sure you've seen the same thing that I have over the years, be able to walk and come up with an idea that, that can utilize this, this space better and be able to do something. I mean, we've, we've been doing this combined for, you know, well over 50 years, so, um, it, that may, that may be a good thing to, if we throw a gym in, we might get to 100 years of combined. But, but, uh-
You're saying?
But, you know, the, the experience that we have to be able to do that, you know, one thing that came, that, that, as soon as you started talking about the abuse and neglect, that's something that really concerned me a, as well, um, all the time, you know, a, a, a few number, a few or two minutes, um, but, um, when we're talking about the Crawford Building, um, I don't know if we took that into consideration about the special needs that are needed for those type of situations, um, and, um, so we probably ought to think about that a little bit, um, with that design. The other thing is, there's the, um, we have a lot of outside agencies, several outside agencies that come in here to talk about, um, needing additional funding, um, maybe, maybe it's time that we look at, um, with that added burden that you see in the court system, maybe we should also consider that with those funding, um, for those agencies as well, because if, if there's an additional, um, I forget how many it was, it was 280-some, wasn't it?
289 of these neglect cases.
Right, you know, if that's, if that's happening in the court system, these, uh, these outside agencies that come in front of us already, they're having the same type of increase that you're-
What I deal with, um, out of the agencies that come before you request money, uh, Safe Dave and Child Advocacy Center is a major player for us, they'll, um, have interviewed children and a majority of the abuse and neglect cases and also in, um, child, uh, you know, sexual assault or abuse or neglect cases that, criminal cases that we take. So we work very closely with them and also provide actual testimony in those cases, so, um, they're, they're an amazing organization, definitely deserving.
Maybe we need to, if, if you could, on your spare time, um, maybe, uh, kind of, let us know how some of these outside organizations really have helped you in court cases or maybe could even help you better by reducing before they happen. I guess they most of them see people after it's happened, be nice to catch them before it happens.
It absolutely would, um, you know, unfortunately, it's part of my job that the majority of the time I'm seeing people after something terrible's happened to them.
Right.
But I would be more than happy to outline that for you. I think Katie Sprig's already been here with Ethic, um, the women's center. I think Katie Sprig's already been here with Ethic, the women's center. She's a force to be reckoned with and she actually comes and testifies for us as an expert witness because her entire job is explaining, you know, trauma from sexual assault and it really helps break it down for people. So, yeah, I would be happy to put that together.
Yeah, that would help us some. The one thing that we have too, and I was going to say it when the sheriff's in, but I didn't want to interrupt you, is one of the things is that we have to look at, and in your request, I think is reasonable, but I always like to, and we've done it before, is to, even though our population is growing, unfortunately, our tax base is a year behind. And it doesn't, with the restraints that we have, with inflation that we're dealt with and the restraints that we have on the rollback, you know, prime example, we're saying our real estate's went up 51% in the last three years, with the rollback, we're only seeing 9%. And so what we have to do from the county standpoint, we can't look at it at a population base, we have to almost look at the percentage of growth on our budget. And then, and I would do it before, I would take all the Monopoly money out of it first, you know, all the printed money that the feds are making, because that's one time and it doesn't sustain a lot of the stuff that's being asked for by the sheriff. I'm not going to direct it to you and no disrespect to him neither, but we have to make sure that, you know, if we make these commitments, we can sustain it. And I know I talked to you about, well, let's talk about this real quick, Katie. Our jail bill is going up, right, from last year. And I always said with the COVID and the shutdown and all that stuff, there was probably backlog on the cases. Is that a true statement or are we catching up on the cases? Are we, is that why we're seeing creep up a little bit or is there another reason?
Well, frankly, I think that it's both. I think that there has been some backlog that we've been working on addressing, but there's also an increase in cases. And even if, you know, we're willing to offer reasonable pleas, work to get people out of jail, you know, work to send them to day report or put them on confinement, you know, there's still another, if you look at it between '20 and '21, another 673, I think, misdemeanors charged. So if those are arrestable offenses, you know, there's going to be an increased initial cost there. So we do review the jail bill frequently and our last one, we should be getting our credit on that substantial, but.
I'm not complaining about it. I mean, I mean, we can attribute it to because the sheriff's department is doing a great job, right, you know? So there's, there's all kinds of things that we can, I just wanted to know if it's, I guess one of the things, if we're catching up on court cases because of the COVID over the last two years, then it's kind of like, it might be dwindling.
Might go the opposite direction.
You know, may start stabilizing, it could go the other way.
Well, we always want to focus on making sure we're only locking people up that we're scared of, not mad at.
Right.
So.
That is.
So that is, you know, that's a focus of ours and something that we're really working to always be cognizant of when we look at who's coming into court and whether they're in order or not and whether there's somebody we can divert elsewhere. I had noted that, that it has been increasing slightly and it's certainly something that we're doing our best to monitor. I think though that, I couldn't attribute it entirely to COVID catch-up, I do think that's part of it. We had a number of trials that were continually pushed back that we're just now realizing, just now getting to, so, but we're, so I think that's part of it, but I do think that there is some increase in these files.
Okay. I'm sure there's an increase just due to a lot less people in the workforce today, you know, that are, that are home, you know, especially when you look at the domestic violence part of it, you know?
While we work so much.
Well, that's a, I mean, that's a, I mean, I've heard of that for years, that that's a byproduct of, you know, unemployment and, you know, that type of thing, so.
Yeah. I said that joke to me by the way.
That's why your phone just blew up, dude.
Ten thousand dollar credit.
Oh, is that right?
What is it?
Ten thousand dollar credit.
I would also be remiss to go back to Mr. Davis's point about our personnel budget. I looked at, one of my very close friends and former coworkers, Kevin Watson, left my office because his wife took over her mom's insurance business in West Virginia. He didn't want to leave, it was really difficult to get a resignation letter out of him to send to Mr. Davis because he really didn't want to leave but was supporting his wife and I can't begrudge that. But he did have a higher salary compared to who brought in to replace him and the, my office manager and another assistant prosecutor and I reviewed salaries and we were looking to make sure everything was well balanced. And I have to give them credit for saying, you know, of course, we want, everybody always wants more, more money, everybody always wants to get paid more, but at the end of the day, they're thankful that the council barely compensates them and felt that it was more important to, in a, I guess, a show of good faith, say, we don't want to just reallocate this, what we really need is more people. So I have to give my staff credit for that.
Yeah, yeah, huge. Great staff. And plus, like you say, when you take, take, bring somebody in that's a new employee, even though they have all the qualifications, it still takes a while for them to get seasoned in the way the office is ran and stuff like that, and before long, they're going to be up and, you know, so there's no disrespect to anybody on that statement, so thank you for that.
We very much appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll see what we can do.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
You can do just that all.
Before you leave, I want to make sure that I understand how you want these papers signed, but go ahead. Next on our agenda is Anthony DeLaGatti, legal director for collateral assignment of the Monument pilot to Virginia Union Bank.
And this is something that Anthony discussed with me a couple of years ago.
Yes, and if you all recall, there was, you entered into three pilot agreements with the Monument companies, their companies are actually 210 Porter Avenue LLC, 300 Porter Avenue LLC, 301 Winchester Avenue LLC. And they're closing next week and the lender wants to be able to jump in if something goes south for the project and to continue on building out the apartment building if they have to foreclose and have the pilot agreement still applied. In our pilot agreement, it's only signable to another party if the county consents. This is just saying if Virginia Union Bank has to foreclose on any of these companies, they can, we will notify, well, if they default on the pilot payment, we'll notify them, but they could also step in the shoes of Monument and, and, now, they want this signed prior to closing because the bank will be cutting the check next week.
I understand that.
So is it three pilots or one pilot then?
There's three.
Two separate pilots.
There's three pilots, there's three phases of the project.
Different, different LLCs or?
Let's start at a different time.
All right.
And we talked, when we talked about it last time, we said it made perfect sense. If I was in their shoes, I would do the same thing.
Yeah. This is the direction we gave Anthony to go. So, all right, entertain a motion.
I take a motion to accept the recommendation from legal counsel to sign the signable pilot, I guess.
Get the council president.
Council president authorization.
Like this was your first day on the job or something?
Second.
Now you got a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any audience from the public?
Mr. President, recess.
We are recessed. Then you have to ask.
Councilman Barnhart's.